John Evans.
You're not setting me up, are you, Bernie?
Okay. Okay, everybody, please take your seat. Welcome to our board meeting and we will begin with public testimony on non-agenda items. And I will call the following people to please come to the podium. Joe Schmidt, Alexandra Ryan, Lorraine Gutierrez, and LeAnn Owen.
And I do believe before the meeting we added two or three other names.
I'll call some people up. Yes. Please.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Joe Schmidt and I am a teacher at Sarah High School and myself, some of these people and the people in the seats who are here to address some concerns that we have about a single parent who is harassing teachers at Sarah High School. For years I've been unfairly singled out and indirectly harassed by Ms. Smith. Not only has Ms. Smith caused me emotional stress and hardship over the years, but she has also drastically impaired my ability to do my job to the fullest. I'm not alone, I say strongly believe that Sally Smith is out to get me. I feel that any information she gets about me or the job I do will be twisted, manipulated, refabricated as a tool to be used against me in efforts to advance her own personal agenda. I can officially tell you that there isn't anything I do at Sarah High School without first taking into consideration what Ms. Smith might think, and I know I'm not alone I say this. Is it right for one person to have so much influence over such a large school? Is it right for one individual? Is it right that one individual is free to use word of mouth, blogs, and other forms of propaganda to harass and intimidate? Is it right that one person can cost our school so many resources in the form of man-hours, money, when we can't afford it? Every hour a teacher, a clerk, an administrator, a board member spends on her baseless and inaccurate complaints and allegation is time and money taken away from the students at Sarah High School. I have witnessed that many teachers and classified staff at Sarah High School work in an environment of fear and hostility because of Ms. Smith's continuous volley of baseless harassments. Based on stories I've heard from my colleagues, Ms. Smith often misconstrues information when she goes on the attack. It is true that Ms. Smith has done some good at Sarah High School, but collateral damage done far outweighs that. I am an alumni at Sarah High School and I have worked there for over 12 years. I love Sarah, I love my job, I'm one of those lucky few that can honestly say I look forward to going to work in the morning. There is nothing more rewarding in my life than the work I do at Sarah High School. For over six years, Ms. Smith has tried to take that away from me. For over six years, I've watched her bully my colleagues in much the same way. I stand here before you today with my fellow colleagues and concerned parents to ask you to protect your employees and students from what is, in my opinion, a bully. It is time that we take a stand and once again allow creativity and passion to flow through the halls of Sarah High School. It is time that we stand together and do what is in the best interest of students rather than just appease one person. It is time that we take our school back. And ladies and gentlemen in the audience, colleagues and parents, I ask you to stand if you feel that Sally Smith is hurting Sarah High School. Thank you, please be seated. Colleagues and parents, once again, I ask you to stand if you feel Sally Smith has undermined Sarah's relationship with its parents, students, and communities. Thank you, that is all.
Hi, my name is Lexi Ryan. I am a senior at Sarah High School and a three-year student representative on school site council. As a student member on SSC, one month ago I witnessed Ms. Sally Smith laugh at and humiliate a fellow classmate on SSC. This student is a elective representative of the student body who is looking after the interests of the rest of the students at Sarah High School, and she was ridiculed by Ms. Smith and her supporters. This is just the tip of the iceberg. SSC members all have the same amount of power, but I feel that Ms. Smith has been demeaning and condescending, and not just at the meeting I mentioned. So, after this meeting, I did a bit of research as a concerned student and was shocked at my discoveries. I assume that Ms. Smith is just trying to make sure that we all follow the law and that all students have equal opportunities, but she is going about it in the wrong way and negatively affecting my personal experience at Sarah High School. For instance, I don't feel like I'm getting the best education that I could be because of Ms. Smith. She takes up the precious time and resources of my own teachers who have to spend hours and hours pulling up records and dealing with Ms. Smith's actions and allegations, when my teachers should be dedicating that time to teaching. This not only prevents the students from getting the best education possible, it also creates a negative atmosphere at Sarah. I have to wonder how many total teaching and preparation hours Ms. Smith has taken up. My parents are certainly not paying taxes to have teachers and staff members spend hours dealing with Ms. Smith. They are paying taxes so I can get a good public education. You guys are the Board of Education. You are elected to help the students. It is my opinion that Ms. Smith negatively impacts Sarah High School. We want our school back, not just for ourselves, but for all the students who have been affected by the hostile environment that I believe Ms. Smith has helped create.
Good evening, my name is Lorraine Gutierrez de Ortaño. I reside at 4125 Tambo Road, San Diego, 92124, and I am a Sarah High School parent. As a parent, it is my belief that my daughter's educational experience at Sarah has been adversely affected by attorney Sally Fay Arguias, also known as Sally Smith, and her numerous and at times pointless complaints and accusations against Sarah's staff and policies. Actions that over the years have created a culture of fear and intimidation among Sarah's teachers, staff, and administrators. I'm not a lawyer. I can't speak to the questionable professional ethics underlying attorney's Arguias representation of fellow Sarah parents, their children, and their complaint, but I can speak to her method. I was the only non-member, council member, parent who was at the now infamous December Sarah School Site Council meeting. At that meeting, I witnessed inappropriate behavior on the part of Sally Smith, and let me make this very clear. Smith never attempted to acknowledge her fellow council members' emotional state, nor did she apologize for her own inappropriate behavior before leaving the meeting early. I was outraged at such a display of arrogance and do not ever want another council member to be subjected to such acts of impunity. This month, Smith was removed from the council at Sarah, an action that I support and will resent. Any pressure on the part of the district or the Board of Education to reverse. Based on what I have witnessed, I don't want her representing me or protecting my rights in any way. Smith would have you believe that parents at Sarah are in an uproar over her role in the recent clarification of district policy regarding school fees. This could not be further from the truth. Sarah parents have been kept in the dark for many years now about Smith's impact on Sarah morale and spirit. We can only guess on the damage done to the relationship between Sarah and its parents, its students, and community. We as taxpayers resent that already strained school and district resources are expended time after time to address Smith's multiple never-ending complaints spanning over a period of years. How many of our tax dollars have been spent on treating the rash every time Sally Smith gets an itch? We as voters have the right to ask you as our elected leaders on this Board of Education to help us get our school back on track. I can only hope you give us as much attention as you have given Sally Smith.
Thank you. Can I also call to the podium Leann El Hurtado, Rachel Wiegman, Susan Skinner, and Lorraine Dabney? Go ahead.
Hello. My name is LeAnn Owen, and I am a proud parent at Sarah High School. I have a 10th grader and I have an 8th grader at De Portola coming to Sarah. There's a very serious concern at our high school, Sarah High School, affecting our education community. We are losing teachers and students because of it. The Board has allowed an individual by the name of Sally Smith to hijack our school. Administrators, teachers, parents, students, and board members on various organizations have been impacted by her legal allegations, countless complaints, harassing emails, letters, and threats. This behavior has impacted our school in a very negative way. Programs have been terminated, syllabuses changed, websites shut down, curriculums downsized for fear of this woman. Everyone impacted by her allegations lives in fear of their job, their career, and very concerned that her allegations will ruin their livelihoods. Not to mention the emotional wear and tear on a daily basis that affect the quality of teaching in each of our children's classrooms. I think every single member on this Board is aware of Sally Smith, including John De Beck. I want to know why the Board of Education -- I see you on your Palm Pilot. I want to know why the Board of Education has done nothing to protect Sarah High School from being bullied by this individual. I want to know why the Board of Education has not stopped entertaining her frivolous claims. How many thousands of tax dollars are being spent defending her claims? Aren't we in a budget crisis? Our teachers, administrators, nurse at Sarah High School, parents and students deserve the right to attend a school that does not live in fear of a lawsuit, an allegation of wrongdoing, or a personal untruthful attack. There were several letters written to the Board of Education. All of you are aware of what's going on at our school. It is now public knowledge that the Board of Education is aware of the hostile environment that teachers and administrators and children and parents are dealing with at Sarah High School because of this woman. It is your duty now to protect us. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. My name is Leo Hurtado, and I have a daughter at Sarah High School and one on the way for next year. I'm also a parent volunteer. Frankly, we need your help at Sarah High School, and that's why we're here. Our school is being sequestered by a litigious individual. Instead of using our collective minds to overcome budget obstacles and finding ways to continue funding educational extracurricular activities at Sarah, we parents are being polarized by one individual who insists on causing distress and fear within the school staff and uses her intellect to oppress rather than her power of persuasion to build and support education. You must already know that I'm referring to Attorney Arguias, aka Sally Smith. Fortunately, she's been ousted from the School Site Council at Sarah. Hopefully, the Board will place a parent that will represent all parents for the benefit of all students and not end up with another political animal using destructive and divisive tactics to climb to the next council or board position. It's unfortunate that the budget cuts and a certain law that is enacted will ultimately result in the elimination of many educational extracurricular activities for students. Many of these activities are valued by universities and considered in the selection of students. Wouldn't it be more useful if more parents help out in raising funds to cover the shortfalls for many activities? If people such as Sally Smith were to participate in productive ways and volunteer with us, parents who support all students, she would serve as a constructive role model for all the parents that she purports to represent. I applaud the many teachers at Sarah who are trying their best within their means. My fear is that the education at Sarah is heading towards becoming a mostly textbook experience for students. Who wants to take the risk of being innovative when they see their teacher colleagues being sued and harassed and made the focus of false accusations? This situation affects all students. The school has already lost great teachers due to this witch hunt, which appears to be mostly occurring at Sarah. I want to see you, the Board, help us to get our school back on track. Let's support Sarah teachers instead of suing them. Let's bridge the gaps between communities instead of polarizing them, and most importantly, let's support our kids, all of them, to retain their extracurricular activities so that they receive an enriched education and the very best opportunity to be accepted into universities. Y muchas gracias por su consideración. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Wiegman. I'm a Sarah -- sorry, I'm a senior at Sarah High School. I've been on SSC for three years now, and I have dealt with Ms. Smith for three years. I don't even know if I should talk right now, because every time I open my mouth, it seems -- sorry. It seems like I am attacked. I hear constant lies about my action, my words get twisted and misinterpreted. This is indicative of what Ms. Smith does to my school, Sarah High, on a daily basis. As a result of my interactions with her, I've done my own research, and the information I have uncovered is shocking. I wonder how she has been able to get away with this for so long and nobody is stopping her. She exaggerates, avoids fact, and manipulates the truth. We want the Board to stand up to this lady. I wish I knew what Ms. Smith's agenda was -- is. The mere mention of her name creates tension and fear for students and staff. This situation should not have been allowed to get to the point where students have to be involved. As a student representative, I want my school back for every student who has been affected by her hostile environment she has created at the school. I believe she is destroying our school. Teachers are afraid to teach and students are unable to learn. This is my senior year and I want my school back. I was attacked by Ms. Smith, her small group of supporters, and even a member on the Board, Mr. De Beck, for doing exactly what I have been encouraged to do: to be involved, to be a leader, to care about my fellow students. Instead, I was ridiculed for this and my concerns were laughed at. I was not only attacked in the SSC meeting, but in public forums online where my emotional stability was questioned by people that I have never met. And I'm here to tell you that I am strong, intelligent, and a highly motivated young woman who knows a bully when I see one, but that's just my opinion.
My name is Susan Skinner. I'm a Sarah High School community member, a parent of two Sarah graduates, and I'm on the faculty of Sarah High School for 26 years. This is my 39th year in San Diego Unified School District and the first time I've been compelled to speak to the Board. My concern is the amount of taxpayer money being spent investigating the frivolous complaints of one parent. An example: Spanish for Spanish Speakers is a district course included in the district's 4100 guide, which is public information. A complaint was filed, and a former principal hired and paid to investigate whether we were discriminating against students of Hispanic origin who were enrolled in Spanish for Spanish Speakers. I ask you, who else do you think would take Spanish for Spanish Speakers? The claim included that Spanish for Spanish Speakers did not meet the UC CSU requirements. Again, both false, both a part of public record that the district could easily have looked up and said, "That is not true." The accusation stated students were forced in the class. False. Students selected the class and have a week to change if they so desire. This former principal spent weeks investigating this one claim, speaking to student after student, teacher, and counselors. Had the complaining parent come and said, "Hey, tell me about this," I could have easily and would have easily produced the documents so that this would not have gone to such a major issue. She has tainted our Hispanic parents against Sarah High School. We are aware in the process -- we are in the process of phasing out Spanish for Spanish Speakers. Isn't that unfortunate? A course designed to help our Spanish-speaking students become even more fluent in the reading and writing in their native language, which is a very sought-after skill in the professional world, especially in San Diego. We're not offering it, thank you very much, and that's why. To enrich the education of our students, another example: the history and English departments began working very closely to align their curriculum and share the same students. Students taking AP English took AP History. The teachers shared assignments, guest speakers, had common projects, truly to offer the students an enriching educational opportunity, a step up from the everyday choice of education. This happened in advanced, regular AP. Well, we don't do it anymore, and for the same exact reason. We were called discriminatory. We were called singling students out. We were called forcing our students to do something. We have a foundation for just about everything. We have parents who want to give, give, give to the school and help us, and we have one parent who is looking to discredit everything we do. Please help us.
My name is Lorraine Dabney. I'm a teacher and a coach at Sarah High School and also a parent of a child who attends that school. I come before you this evening as a representative of myself and some of my staff at Sarah High School. I'm here to speak out against the harassment, intimidation, and false allegations and complaints that I feel have been made against us by Sally Smith. It is my opinion that Sally Smith has been harassing the staff and administration at Sarah for a number of years by filing frivolous complaints. Her approach is negative, hurtful, and intimidating by not stopping until she gets what she wants, regardless of what is best for the students. I believe she does not follow the proper procedures of the complaint process, often going over the head of the one she's complaining about. It is my opinion that she is ruining the programs that support students. I have personally experienced Mrs. Smith's terror by being caught off-guard with unsound complaints from a person who doesn't even know who I am or how I teach. She has caused stress in the workplace for me by creating a hostile environment, making it difficult for me to be the best teacher and coach I can be. I feel helpless in defending myself against her claims. Many of my colleagues and I feel paranoid that with every word we speak and every action we take in the classroom, Sally Smith will be lurking, waiting to file the next complaint against us. I believe Sally Smith collects information on staff members factual or non-factual. Why? I think it's so she can use it against us later to promote her own agenda. She bashes our school and the media, criticizing our professionalism, our programs, and our policies. As educators, we are calling on you, our school board members, to please help us do the right thing for our kids and assist us with this person who obviously has a vendetta. We're asking for a cease and desist of Mrs. Smith's continual investigations and harassing complaints that she files on us. The counselors and staff have spent countless hours serving this person, not to mention the amount of taxpayers' dollars already spent on dealing with her issues. We need your help in allowing us to do the professional job we are hired to do. We want to return to teaching the students and stop defending ourselves.
Thank you. Can I call Craig Osborne, Stone Eastman, Francine Maxwell, and Heidi Lyon?
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Craig Osborne. I'm the district manager for Pearson Education, and while that name may not mean a lot to you, we are the company that published your high school books and your middle school mathematics books. I'm not here today to talk about books, though, which is hard for me as a sales representative and a rep for this company. I'm here to talk about something completely unrelated to textbooks, with the exception of the fact that some of your kids can't use them. What I'm really here to talk about today is a principal in your school district, and this is a very positive comment. I'm here to talk about Consuelo Manriquez. Is she in the audience? Maybe not right now. Consuelo Manriquez is the principal of San Diego High School, School of the Arts, and a very special person. She started a bus pass scholarship about, well, several months ago because there were about 200 kids at San Diego High School that could not get to school. They're commuting from six, seven miles away. Some are hopping trolleys, some are trying to take cabs, but at the end of the day, mom and dad can't afford to get them to school. And so she called me up, and I must say that Ms. Manriquez is very persuasive. She asked me for a favor, and like any good sales representative or representative of a company, I wanted to hear what she had to say because I respect her very much. She brought me into her office and she asked me, or told me, this story of these kids who could not get to school and the bus pass scholarship that she started. She said she didn't have enough money to buy kids bus pass scholars, you know, to get them to school. And she asked me if I would help. And obviously, it's difficult for companies just to write checks to school districts, but I want to be a partner with this school district. Pearson wants to be a partner with this school district, you're a partner with us. And so I pledged some money to the bus pass scholarship, enough that she could finish getting these buses, these kids bused to school for the rest of the year. And I just want to let her know, whether she's in this room or not, or if she's bringing in her mariachi group in a few moments, that I appreciated her tenacity. I appreciated her coming to me as a partner in this school district, and I appreciated the opportunity to partner with her and her school to help your kids get to school to use the books that you've purchased from me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne.
This is Stone Eastman, 1842 49th Street.
Hi, my name's Stone, and I'm a 1st grader at the Language Academy, and I need my school because if they close it, I'll be two years behind, and that isn't fair. So, please, can you fund it?
All right. Thanks, Stella.
My name is Francine Maxwell. I'm the parent of two children in San Diego Unified School District. Well, thank you, Sarah. I think I learned a few things from your presentation. I appreciated that. Team Unified, first time I've been before you this year, I truly believe that you believe that it's time to stop coddling underperforming schools. I truly believe that you believe that. It's time to stop coddling underperforming schools, underperforming administrators, and underperforming teachers. It's time, and I truly believe that you believe, that the subpar treatment that the students, the parents, and the community are getting out of these underperforming schools, that it's time to remove that. The educators out of the classroom, the administrators out of being in charge. Completely understand that things take time. Reform takes time, but the district needs to move reform at a faster pace. And make it clear to us, the taxpayers, the community members, the parents that volunteers many hours, many dollars to the school, that you're paying attention to the issues that the district should have been paying attention to all along. There should be no more excuses as a high school counselor, head counselor, that has no caseload, that gets paid overtime. That's almost another check. Do away with the head counselor. Let my already overworked, busy VP do it. Get rid of the position. I'm looking at other schools, they're streamlining. The district is streamlining operations. Mediocrity should no longer be accepted in this new year. We're right here at the beginning. It's time -- you're giving us time that our students don't have. All this overtime on campuses in this day and age with the economic constraints that we're in, has this Board pulled the numbers? I formally request that you pull the numbers of the overtime pay that is going on. Use the fourth council district if you like, compare that to another council district in the schools that all these people are being paid overtime. The CST scores aren't moving? Is the AYP moving? But other people -- I have no problem with people and their livelihood. Completely understand that they have to work. My children should come first. The overtime money that we're paying, I do believe that we can do some other things with it. I have an issue where the educators send out their calendars, and it clearly states between the hours of 4 to 6, I'm returning phone calls, I'm returning emails. They're not on campus. We have so many people that you think are on our campuses daily, and they're not, but they're getting paid like they're there. The parents aren't getting their phone calls returned, the parents aren't getting their emails returned. You would think after five business days that a parent can get a phone call.
I need to comment really quickly.
Very quickly.
Ms. Maxwell, Ms. Francine, don't worry about District E, won't be there much longer. Thank you.
Heidi Lyon.
Good evening, President Barrera, Vice President Evans, Superintendent Kova, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Heidi Lyon, and I am the principal at Stanley Middle School. With me at the meeting this evening are other middle-level principals, Ms. Michelle Irwin from Marshall Middle, Ms. Chris Hargrave from Maryland's Middle, and Ms. Bernadette Nguyen from Wilson Middle. We are here to support you and the important decisions you make about the school district and make ourselves available to you in the event you have questions about middle-level principals' perspectives on the topics you will address at the meeting today. Thank you in advance for recognizing our expertise in decisions that impact student achievement in our schools.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to ask the Navy JRO TC color guard from Point Loma High School to present the colors. Please stand.
Over, march, left, left, right, right, left, left, right, left, left, right, right. Other guard, hold. Out, forward, face.
Please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin?
I loathe the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, ready, cut. Ready, cut. Attention, face. Ready, cut. Forward, cut. Over, march, left, 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 right, 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 left.
Thank you. Please be seated. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the January 26, 2010 Regular Meeting to order with all board members present. Yes. Okay, if you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium and you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 PM and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like the ASB student representatives to the board to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself and what's going on at your schools, both academically and socially.
All right. I'm Vincent Scumina, ASB president of La Jolla High School. Right now, our seniors are working on their exhibitions. They started this month, and they'll continue through March. Teachers are preparing students for the AP tests. Most of them are going to be in May. And we've got, most of our finals are next week, and so we're studying hard for that. And we, ASB has organized a Souls for Souls. It's a youth shoe drive for the families of Haiti and everybody there. We partnered with Sport Chalet, so we're going to, we're collecting shoes, and then we're, Sport Chalet's going to ship them over there. And we just had a student congress last week that Mr. Barrera was there, Mr. Kova was there. And we talked about a number of things, including military recruitment on campuses, the budget. And so we, a lot of us have come to the agreement, like, that we think there should be a counselor present during the talks with military recruiters. Students from the JRO TC even agreed to that. They agreed that that would be a good idea. And what else? We also talked about student priorities, and everybody was pretty adamant on the arts and athletics, with some ideas on ways we can save money, including possibly cutting freshman sports or letting middle school kids try out for the JV team, if that could be done. And then possibly combining art classes if, like, say, somebody's taking Art 1, 2, and Art 3, 4, and if there isn't as high a demand for those classes, if they could be combined because, so they could teach them, because it's not as focused as, say, the other classes on campus. And then also the idea of having students do the, like, community service, like, we obviously still need janitors and stuff like that, but to have students receive community service hours for doing some of, like, the campus beautification, so we don't need people to come in, do landscaping, and encourage kids to pick up their trash, so we don't need four janitors after lunch every day. So yeah, that's what we're working on.
Good evening. My name is Joy Erica DeWitt, and I am Morse High School's ASB president. Currently, we are preparing for our SADY Hawkins and also for our finals and senior portfolios. And we are going to have our second blood drive in February. ASB is also currently finding ways to motivate students for testing at the end of the year and for CASI, and to show them how important testing really is for our school. And that's pretty much it. And I look forward to spending time today.
Thank you. Thank you, Vincent Joy. And now I'm very excited to ask Principal Consuelo Manriquez from San Diego High School, School of the Arts, and Teacher Seraphin Paredes to come and present to us the mariachi group from San Diego High School.
Thank you. And I've been very lucky to enter, I mean, I left Corea in a great high note, and I got to San Diego High, and I have a great appreciation to the school that I've met. We have the School of the Arts, and we have, this is only one part. We have tons of beautiful talent at that school. And I want to thank Craig for bringing up the whole thing of the bus pass. I just want to give an update. I started with 2,500 from the midway, was able to give 11 scholarships for a six-month bus pass for students to come to school because they could not afford it. They all wrote an essay the last day of school, they had three hours, and I got 68 responses. Thanks to the last donation, I'm able to do 80 students' six-month bus passes for San Diego High School of the Arts. So I thank you for all your support. And now I want to just thank, I'm going to introduce Mr. Paredes, our great music teacher at San Diego High School of the Arts.
Hi, thank you. My name is Seraphin Paredes. I'm the teacher at San Diego High. This is one of the classes that we teach there. We have three different classes plus a couple of after-school music programs that we have. This is the advanced mariachi group that we have. This is a class that is not just for School of the Arts, it's a complex wide. We're able to get students from all the six different schools to participate in this. There, in that program, we also try to give scholarships to kids. Right now, we're trying to do a big fundraiser. We have 10 kids graduating this year. We're trying to give each one a $1,000 scholarship, so we have a long ways to raise about at least $1,000. We're also doing a big mariachi showcase next month, I'm sorry, the month of March. We're still establishing the date, but it'll be the first or second week. So these kids, they go through the program, they learn the curriculum, they learn how to read the music, they know how to perform on the instrument. So they are actually meeting everything that we're supposed to be teaching in the school system. Some of these kids, their goal is to become music teachers. So this is just one of the classes that they enjoy. They should be able to play with any orchestra in town, whatever they wish to do with music. So it's a really good fundamental. This is something they enjoy performing. And I'm going to introduce all of them. I'm going to start over here with Rebecca, Monica, Maria, Briseida, Saul, Alfonso, Eduardo, Yael, David, Carlos, Vanessa, Alicia, and Juan. They all play all this. We have a typical mariachi group. The only instrument we don't have represented here is the harp, but you're going to see that we don't need the harp right now. We hope, we hope you enjoy their performance, and if you ever need a mariachi anywhere, just call us, we'll be glad to go and perform for you. Okay? Thank you.
Good.
Just once again, want to thank the San Diego High mariachi band. Mr. Paredes and a couple of the students in the group are actually going to Roosevelt Middle School and helping start a group there that would feed into San Diego High School. And once again, can we please honor Consuelo Manriquez for incredible leadership? All right, back to business.
That was our business.
Okay, well, why don't we start with the superintendent's information report, Mr. Kova?
Thank you, President Barrera. A few items to update the board and the community at large on. This past Thursday, I happened to participate in an online learning options forum at the county office of education. Dr. Randy Ward, our county superintendent, is very interested in bringing local superintendents together to investigate partnership opportunities, ways of collaborating with districts among ourselves to create, share, and direct the development of online learning. It's the first in a series of forums. I was able to provide information about our own credit recovery program, our own I-High, our first virtual high school, and I'll be engaging Darrell Agace in leading the county superintendents to what we've been doing and learning from them as well. Another meeting of the past week is my first participation in the Commission on Gang Prevention and Intervention. I think a very, very fine, focused organization, meeting with Chief Police Lansdowne, as well as the heads of probation, parole, many community activists. And there was extensive discussion about developing job opportunities for the young, particularly those at risk within the school district and across the city as a whole. There's something called the Listening Tour I'm interested in bringing to the district where we would be having an engagement with experts in gang prevention, as well as former gang members, and having a forum for students, principals, staff at large to understand each other. So there's more to follow in that regard. Something this week that we're really looking forward to, and that's the Dream Tour Assembly on Friday at Lincoln High School. We have the great honor of having Dr. Bernard Harris, the first African-American astronaut in space. We are, the first stop in his 2010 Dream Tour. This is an opportunity for him to share his own opportunities, his own climb to success, and to certainly stimulate our own middle schoolers with regards to problem-solving, how they can use math and science to benefit themselves. So it's his personal story, and then engage in them. And we're going to have middle schoolers from Memorial, Millennial Tech, and Innovations all part of this on Friday morning. And the last thing is the budget. We have been, over the last couple of weeks, engaging much of the leadership across the district in the work of the priority-based budgeting. A whole lot more to follow, and next week, week from today as a matter of fact, we'll be discussing where we are with that process and looking forward to that community engagement and conversation with the board. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Kova. Can I get our motion to adopt the agenda?
Shall move to second.
Please vote.
Wonder what would happen if we voted no.
I thought we'd all go home. Next time, I'll remember that. Okay, so we just need to, one motion to approve the minutes of the meetings of December 15, January 12, December 11, and January 5.
Move both.
Great.
Second.
Great. And we need a motion to approve the appointment of representatives to the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. Okay, great. We will now have information reports from the board. Mr. DeBeck?
Well, I have none, except I have the next item, so may I?
No.
Okay, then I'll wait my turn.
We'll move on. Please do. Ms. Jackson?
I have none at this time. Thank you.
Dr. Evans?
Yes, I just want to say that I'm very encouraged by the participation. We saw a great group from Sarah, who's been very involved in their school and a lot of community groups throughout the city. And we've tried to make this a very open process as we're dealing with the budget crisis, but also just improving education in our schools. And I'd have to make one correction. I did say before not to believe anything that you read in the editorial pages, but last week, the paper let me write a guest editorial, so you can...[661.12][661.12](Laughter). That's an exception. And there was also a very fine interview with President Barrera on Sunday that gave a lot of insight into some of the things that the Board of Education and the district are facing now. We were also in a meeting the other night at La Jolla High School. Parents coming together to form a cluster association in their community, much as they've done in other communities that we're here about tonight, and including some that are in my district. We have more websites up from some of the cluster associations. So, there's a lot of movement on different levels for people to participate very openly in the district, so I'm very pleased to see that.
Ms. Nakamura?
Yes, I'd also like to thank the Sarah parents for coming down. The show of support for your school, parents and teachers and students is tremendously important. It's unfortunate, it has to be, under such difficult circumstances. But I think the voices were intelligent and clear and thoughtful in their comments. And so, I've already thanked several of you personally, but I just wanted to go on record and say thank you for coming down. I think it's important sometimes, you know, the administration and people down here at the ed center can't understand, no matter how many times we tell them. So, thank you. I also was invited to attend or be on the advisory committee for the National Association of Music Merchants, who had their convention in Anaheim a week and a half ago. I actually have prepared a PowerPoint presentation that I want to share with all of you. But in light of the budget discussion that we're going to be having, you know, I don't have that PowerPoint with me right now, but I want to talk about the career opportunities that I saw at that conference, over 8,000 vendors. It was one of the most extraordinary experiences that I've had. I had to be there for two days as a non-musician who doesn't read music. It was, all I could see was career technical education and visual and performing arts, you know, looking at it from my chair. It was an absolutely extraordinary experience. And I want to share with the board what I saw, that I was planning on for the next board meeting. We have such a tight agenda today. So, thank you.
Mr. Reinerston and I had a chance to go up to Sacramento last week, and along with our legislative director, Monica Enistrosa, we had several meetings, the chief education advisors for the Speaker of the Assembly and the Senate Majority Leader, as well as from our local delegation, assembly members, Saldana and Block, and Senator DuCheney, and Fletcher, and Senator DuCheney. You know, typically confusing day in Sacramento in terms of, you know, where we are in resolving the state budget crisis. I would say that there was consensus among everybody that we talked to that the proposed cuts to education from the governor's budget would require a suspension of Proposition 98, which would require a two-thirds vote of the legislature, and which was, you know, in a sense, you know, a positive set of conversations, that it's going to be very difficult for the governor to push through those cuts. On the other hand, nobody in Sacramento seems to have any clue about how they're going to pass their budget. So, the positive takeaway, though, was we've been trying to push for the past year for legislation that would return to school districts the penalty money that has been assessed from increases in class size. You know, we get cut hundreds of millions of dollars by the state, and one of the things that we were forced to do as a result was to increase class size in kindergarten through third grade from 20 to 24 students, certainly something that none of us wanted to do. But then on top of that, the state more or less taxed us $13 million for taking that action. We want that money back, and if we get that money back, we believe it can be very helpful in keeping our class sizes down. So, we have two assembly members from San Diego, Assembly Member Marty Block and Assembly Member Nathan Fletcher, a Democrat and a Republican, who have agreed to co-author legislation to push through to get that class size reduction penalty back. And so, that was a very positive development. Okay. So, now we'll move on to the cluster budget pilot and Mr. DeBeck.
Thank you. Well, this is pretty much a grassroots effort. As you may know, the Point Loma Cluster got very active just before I got elected to the board, when they had to make some decisions about closing schools in Point Loma because of declining enrollment. The result of that originally was a closure of Dana School, and the result of that was a lot of controversy within the community, which, when I was running, became an issue for me. I wanted to reopen the school and figure out a way to make it work. So, we had a cluster study. That was probably in the, I'll call it, in the early '90s. And since then, they've been very actively participating in observing and directing the schools. And the last time they actively got together, I'll call it, under a decision that needed to be made for the board was when they came together on the discussion that we were having at the time of the concept of having K-8 schools, which appeals to a lot of people, which needed a lot of information in the Point Loma Cluster. New parents really had the whole background of how things had happened. So, the parents there have been instructing each other on what's going on, giving each other the history. And as a result of that, they're pretty well organized and have, I think, a handle on the needs of their cluster. And they support the concept of the cluster being some kind of a group of involved people who want to have a say in how the schools are developing. So, as a result of that, they have made, and earlier have made, some recommendations, and they've been supportive for, I'll call it, sharing of cluster resources under the leadership of some of our staff. Now, because of the current budget situation, I think they're more interested in developing some kind of refinement of that process. And so, we were able to draft a memorandum agreement, which has been agreed to by a majority of the cluster schools, not all of them, because some of them have few concerns. Basically, what the cluster process is about is that it's gathering together representatives of schools under the auspices of the Cluster Foundation to come up with non-binding recommendations on how they'd like to see things happen within their cluster and how resources could be used. And on the table would be the information that they gathered from all the schools about what their budgets entailed and what the sites and the central office provided for the cluster's performance. Now, the schools in the cluster number a little more than 6,000 students, which is as large as the District of Coronado, so they feel interested enough that they are willing to go that way. The disclaimer here is that this is not a binding agreement between the schools. This is a cooperative effort of both school leaders and the parents in inspecting the budget and coming up with ideas about it. And I'd like to have the cluster managers, the people that are involved in the community, come forward and kind of make the rest of the presentation. Kristi Scadon is the president of the Point Loma Foundation, and she's representing a number of others in that cluster who have been very active and collaborative in working with the school district. This is not a cluster takeover, which many people have considered, you know, I'll call it, the threat of it. But it really isn't that. It's a chance for them to participate in the cluster-fronting progress and show the way for other clusters to get more involved. And La Jolla Cluster has participated in it. There have been communications with the Scripps Ranch, as well as the University of City Group, and also with the Mission Bay High School Cluster. So, I'll let them make their presentation.
Hi, I'm Kristi Scadon.
And I wonder, aside from Matt Spathas, who filled out a speaker slip, if everybody can make sure to fill out a speaker slip as you make your presentation?
Yeah, I was turning it over to them to coordinate it, and I wasn't expecting them to sign up to speak as separate people.
Okay.
So, it's like my time, I'm just giving them the mic.
Okay. Absolutely. Go ahead.
And I have to say, we do this kind of as an executive board, so I'd like to do this as an executive board in our presentation too. And I don't have anything formal to present to you. But, you know, basically, since 2006 and the development of our strategic plan, we have been organized and meeting, and we have stakeholders from parents to teachers to administrators that have been working and are actively working on all of our areas of emphasis. And recently, with the budget crisis and coming out to Point Loma, when you guys came out, it was great because we had about 75 community members that were interested in a way to speak their voice and have their voice heard. So, we came up with a survey and presented that. And, you know, we also had on the survey that our parents and our community and our staff, everybody that, about 500 people responded, a little over that, was interested in something more. How do we address the needs of our community? And talking to other clusters as well, as they develop, they're looking at the same thing. So, this is an outside-the-box, like you have asked for, idea, and we'd like to explore it.
Do you want to add anything?
Hello, board. And Superintendent Cova, Matt Spathas, parent of four children, either through or still in the Point Loma Cluster. And I just wanted to add to Kristi's comments. We've got members of our executive committee here today, Teresa Drew, Shelley Kurth, Julie Kramer, and Kristi, and myself. You're seeing five members of our 10-member executive committee. And just by way of background, as Kristi mentioned, the strategic plan that was created, over 50 people involved in our creation of our strategic plan with representatives from all 10 schools. Those representatives include the school principal, a parent, and teacher from every school. We actually hired a coordinator to help us in those conversations and the dialogue to develop our strategic plan, which was completed in about six months. I'm really pleased with the synergy that's been created in the Point Loma Cluster. I think it's been wonderful communication. We've got an email list that have communication to parents, it's over 5,000. There's weekly e-blasts that go out at the cluster level, as well at each school-site level. So, we've really, I think, enhanced the communication, the synergy between our schools. And I think at this point, we're ready to take the next step in our community. Today, our board consists of over 38 members with representatives from every school, again, principal, teacher, and parent. If approved today by the board, our Cluster Foundation will ensure that our process is inclusive, that it's transparent, and it's collaborative. We understand that any outcomes will need to be synergistic, sustainable, and accountable. This process will include teachers, administrators, community, district, and others that are involved in our Point Loma Cluster schools. We've spent countless hours in our community creating a strategic plan, and the ongoing efforts of excellence has uniquely positioned our cluster. We believe this can be an exciting conversation that will hopefully enhance the educational opportunities of our students. Our cluster is extremely diverse: 6,000 students, 45% free lunch, 15% English-language learners, 30% gate, 37% Hispanic, and 14% students with disabilities. The budget allocation for our cluster, our 10 schools, is approximately $30 million. I think what I'd like to ask today is, we don't have a solution. We just really would like your blessing to start a conversation, a conversation about a new dialogue with new ideas and new energy, on ways that we can synergize our community schools, our budgets. And as Mr. DeBeck mentioned, this would be truly voluntary, the dialogue by our community schools. But I can tell you that while some schools were uncomfortable signing a formal, quote, MOU, even though it was non-binding, all schools are very interested in the dialogue. So, I hope you'll support us in this. I think it can be synergistic. I think it can be collaborative. And I think that, at the end of the day, we may have some control over our budget, but I want to stress that anything we do will come with accountability. Thank you very much.
Mr. DeBeck?
Well, I'd like to move approval. If there's other speakers who wish to speak, you know, they say no, but, you know, I'm solidly behind this initiative. I think they're, and I think the board itself has spoken pretty clearly that they're interested in developing this concept. So, since it's non-binding and advisory and isn't a trap, as some people have made a look, I think I'd move approval.
I second the motion.
Any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like a little more evidence, though, of what the administration, the people who are running the schools have to say about this. Have you brought any of your principals with you?
These are signed by, I have examples here, signed by individuals. Point Loma High School principal and her SSC has signed, the Correa Middle and the SSC has signed, Dana and their SSC has signed. So, there's, and there's letters from each of the 10 schools here. So, there's a considerable, they're interested. There's always questions about, like one or two, the principal said, "Well, I haven't had a chance to touch base with my SSC. I've got a few other questions." That's what these folks will be answering as they proceed down the path. Frankly, I think that the permission is really a kind of ritual that we should do, but I honestly do believe they have a right to engage in this activity without our permission.
Yeah.
You know, as that said, I just honestly believe that this is an opportunity for the schools and the parents to collectively learn a lot about each other and about the process that we've got for budgeting.
Yeah, just to continue, you know, this is, you know, the type of innovation that I think that this district is looking for. But if you're going to do this, I would really like to see it as a model, and I know you, Mr. Spathas, well enough that it will be done well, and all of you folks out there in Point Loma. But, you know, I really want this to be something that is worked on and developed with and towards replication. You know, I am concerned about sustainability within the district. We've got a group of very concerned and interested parents, teachers, and principals, but, you know, is this going to be sustainable over the long haul, as I, you know, as I've discussed with you? But I think it's an interesting concept and it opens a conversation. And, you know, I'm interested in it. But I'd also like to hear from our superintendent, Mr. Cova, generally speaking, what's your feeling about this?
I think it's a creative idea. I think it's, time has come. I've spoke to Mr. Reinerston, and we're out there, had a budget cluster meeting this past fall, and the folks out there are very engaged and very interested. And I understand the board has wanted to pursue inclusiveness and community engagement to the next level, and I think this is a start.
Okay. Thank you.
There's an evaluation implied. I have to tell, say that, because there is supposed to be a final evaluation of the process.
Okay. Well, I'm not totally understanding all of this, because as Mr. DeBeck did say, it's not a requirement. I'm not understanding why the board has to approve this recommendation at all. I know that you've been working together already as a group, and I'm not understanding what this is. You said this is the next step. The next step in transitioning to what? So, maybe I'm just a little slow right now, this evening, but I'm not, because to me, if it is the mission of your cluster and other clusters to, and I know that you guys are looking and considering becoming a charter, if that is the case, and I think that you should do it, you don't need our blessings to do it, I think you should just do it. I don't, because I see here that it's understood that some site funds may be used. And so, if you, if this is asking us to have sites allocate funds to help you in this, then I can't support it. I think that if the community wants to come together and they want to form their cluster, you already have the numbers for the budget for each school in your area. So, that's why I'm confused as to what you're asking for to participate in a budget, a cluster budgeting process. You already have the numbers for all the school-site budgets in your cluster, and if you want to play with those numbers, you're more than welcome to do that without having to come to the board for any, you know, any permission. Okay?
We could allow Mr. Spathas?
Sure, sure. I have an answer, but maybe his would be better and more credible.
Okay.[1769.32][1769.32](Laughter).
I'm not sure about, I'm not sure about that. But I think, first of all, let me tackle two comments. We're not asking for any funds as part of this study. That's number one. And number two, this is not a charter conversation. This is really a conversation about budget synergy in our community. We've got 10 schools managing independent budgets. We've got district allocation to our community, and the community is really merely saying, gee, we've got $30 million that's allocated. Can we have a different kind of conversation? dollars that's allocated, can we have a different kind of conversation to see what we might be able to synergize? And we're not sure really what that is, whether it could be programs, it could be professional development, we're not exactly sure. We really, Mr. DeBecch, and I think, Ms. Jackson, you're correct, we really don't need the permission to have the conversation, but what we're really asking for here is to try to be fully transparent. There's been lots of rumors around, in our, outside of our community, about what we're trying to organize, this is not a charter movement. Correa had a charter conversation, they were a program improvement school in year five, and Correa had to come up with a solution, as you know, they're one year out of their program improvement, but if they go back in, they had to have a solution in place to come out of program improvement. And one of those things that was considered was charter, and Correa's made the decision that they're not going to study that this year, but depending on the results, those teachers and staff there may have that conversation next year, so I want to make that really clear.
Okay, but my question is, why are you asking us for permission when you already have access to all the data and information that you need?
Well, I can answer that.
Well, I want to hear from this group.
Yeah, but I think I have something to say that they would talk to you about.
This is the group that is saying that they want to do this, and while you have signatures there, where is the principals and any staff from Point Loma cluster? If you're here, please stand, okay? Because I don't see that, okay? And I am all for community input, I'm not for community takeover. If you're going to do something, then take the numbers and look at them and crunch them. But if you're asking, because what I think I hear you saying, and maybe I'm wrong, is that you're here, we're going to give you permission to do this, now you go back to the schools and say, now you must share whatever it is that you're doing with us. And I'm saying that, you know, if they're not sharing, then that's a different conversation. But what happens sometimes is that boards approve things that the schools, and I'm sorry, they're not here, and so I don't know if that is what they want, you know, how they want to proceed. They may want to keep it a local conversation, this makes it a board action, this directs them to be actively engaged, and that's the concern that I have.
Don't they have to sign the MOU?
The MOU is totally voluntary, all the schools have signed a letter of interest in entering the conversation, that's number one. Number two is, the MOU is totally voluntary on the school's part. Let me stress.
In my board packet, I don't have one signed MOU.
Here they are.
Okay, Mr. DeBecch, use your example. When you're sitting here, you're approving what you see in front of you, and what I see in front of me is not one signed MOU from any school, okay? It's not in my, it's not here in my board packet, and if it came in late, then, but I don't want us, and this is what we always end up doing, we approve something, and people say we had to do it because the board approved it. And I want to make sure that before I go down this road, that it's something that the community wants. I think, I like what you're doing in the Point Loma cluster, and I appreciate it, but I'm not going to vote yes for something that I'm not sure what it is that's really going to happen, because you have access to the data already.
Well, I'm sorry you didn't get the exhibits that were sent to the board office today at two o'clock, and they include signed MOUs that are totally voluntary by the school, and they're actually signed by all of the principals in Point Loma community as well as SSCs. Ms. Jackson, the other thing I would just mention to you is, the reason we need board support is, we are going to need access to some additional information. For example, in the thirty million dollars of discretionary and non-discretionary money that comes to our school, there's obviously an allocation for administration and some other things, there are very large line items in all of the schools, and all we're really looking to do is to aggregate our budget in our community and see where we can synergize to become more efficient. I actually think this is a very timely conversation, as has been mentioned before, and I'm hoping that it's something that our key learnings here will not stay, as Ms. Nakamura said, in our Point Loma community, but new ideas will be emerged that can be scaled throughout the district.
I don't disagree with you, I'm just saying you don't need our approval to do it. When you put board approval on something, that tells the staff that this is something that they must do. And right now, and certainly this is just one board member speaking, I hear our principals and I hear our teachers saying they have a full plate, and I hear our staff, again, working with everybody in the community, trying to find ways to deal with this budget, and I applaud everybody else coming to help. But if this action is going to cause us to have to shift and do a little bit more, we're in a significant time crunch right now, and I have to, and I have to feel that whatever, because your project is a long-term project, is that not correct?
I hope it's not a long-term project, I hope it's, I hope we come back with sixty days of recommendations this board.
Yeah, you don't know Mr. Mathus, he's not a long-term project.
I know Mr. Mathus.
Very briefly, the reason for informing the board is because the board has said something about clusters themselves in the first place, and secondly, when these folks are exploring, they would like to have people understand that it is a pilot, and that it is non-binding on the participating schools, and so the revisions of the, I mean, you can read a line saying, "It's understood the recommendations may utilize some site funds," it doesn't say, "We're going to grab them," and it says later, "It's understood the budget is subject to all contractual agreements that the district's involved in, it's further understood that special funds and grants to each school's entitlement will remain with them," and then it also has a statement here that says, "If you don't agree with it, you can bail." So, I mean, basically, it's just, it's not like the board says you must participate, this is a collaborative group that either is going to participate or not, it's voluntary. If they agree, they may come up with some ideas like, for example, which have happened, by the way, in this cluster already, sharing music teachers, sharing nurses, sharing security, where you can't look at one individual budget and find that line item, but you could say, "Well, you know what, it would be valuable to us to have that one line item in one of the schools shared by many of us." That's something you can't do with a school budget, it's something you can do with a cluster budget. And I'm not going to invent their solutions, what I'm trying to do is give them an opportunity to use that kind of thinking to get somewhere, to help us with the operation of the cluster and getting their collaboration with how we're going to do this work. If we basically say, "Well, we need the blessing of every single school," the answers are somebody's schools, even after the recommendation are going to come in, are going to say, "Wait a minute," because if you look down the list of schools and their amounts, you'll find that there's quite a division among the schools in how much money each of them gets. They're not all getting the same amount of money each time, so there's bound to be some kind of potential disagreement. You know, the range is from like eight thousand to five thousand dollars per school, per pupil, so there's going to be some, what you might call winners or losers, but if they see that the winning is going to be for everybody, they may be willing to participate. You know, sure, you want to say, "I doubt it," let's find out.
I'm not saying so they can do it.
Anyway, I move that we do it.
Dr. Evans.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say I'm very excited about this. When I first came on the board, I mean, one of the things I felt was that the school district was too large, very cumbersome, there's a lot of economic scale we can have, but we really need local community involvement on the ground by the people who are right there in the communities, working with the kids. And so I was first thinking of, you know, the structural changes we could make, but there's a lot to be said for the fact that you can't really impose democracy, but rather to let it come from the communities. And so, and the communities in my district, I went out to them and said, "I'd like some sort of clustery advisory board, form an association, where you come to me in a united way with what your ideas for your community prove to me and show to me that it's a representative group, that it isn't just a few people speaking out, but you really represent the people that are there." And I think, obviously, that's what you've done. Now, I know one of the things that Mr. DeBecch has said before is that such groups don't really have a lot of effectiveness unless they're really looking at the important things, such as the budget. I mean, the budget is really where we look at our priorities, what is important and how we go about it, and so I think this is an important step to include. I know when I was at the meeting with the La Jolla people last week, there were concerns from some people that this is a whole new, separate entity and what's going on. It really is just enhancing what we already have. We already have clusters with schools feeding into each other. The difference I see is that we have two hundred schools individually reporting to a central office and not necessarily coordinating that well with the schools that are right next to them, and I think that's what this can really do. We have, we've had a lot of site-based budget-making, I'm not sure it's always been, depending on the school, really been a community process. Sometimes it's the administrators there, they're making the decisions as opposed to the entire community. And the reality is, when you're looking at the budget, there are different amounts to the different schools, and there are going to be some adjusting, because it is a zero-sum game in terms of the amount of money from the district. And so you may decide that, I'm sorry, reminded and worried about that setting the buzzer. So anyway, let me just conclude by saying I think that, I think this is a really good idea, and obviously, we're going to have to, you can come up with recommendations, it's not letting the board off the hook in terms of having to make the final decisions at this point in terms of what's going on with the budget, but I think the difference may be we can come up with much better decisions, because we've had a lot better input and involvement from the people who really care and know what's going on in our schools, so I really strongly support your effort.
Was that a second?
Okay.
I seconded at the very beginning of the conversation.
Yeah, I just want to also echo, I think, Dr. Evans' comments and others. I think the work that you've done historically in creating the Point Loma cluster is just a terrific example for the rest of our district. I know, you know, for instance, our I-21 program really emerged from work that you've done together as a cluster in the Point Loma district, and I thank Mr. DeBecch for his leadership in helping to organize the cluster, and it is, you know, setting an example, the La Jolla group is very interested in other school clusters. I'm hoping to, that the schools in the San Diego High Cluster engage in a similar conversation, so I applaud what you're doing, I thank you for coming in partnership and presenting your idea to the board, and I appreciate the spirit of that, and I support this as well. So why don't we go ahead and vote?
Well, we have, except for you and Mr. Dr. Evans.
Okay, passes four-one, thank you.
Way to go, guys.
Okay, we move to item FO three, property inventory and property management plan annual update, Superintendent.
Thank you, President Barrera. This is the annual review and approval of the property management plan on an annual basis. We have our advisory committee on utilization of excess school property provide this for your review, they meet on a periodic basis throughout the year. In this case, they are recommending only one change, and that is to move a remnant at Sarah High School off the list because of act of consideration as the site of the district's backup information technology center, and so we're requesting your consideration tonight, and I see the chairman, Mr. Varnador, standing over on the auditorium floor.
Okay, Mr. Varnador, please.
I move approval.
Third, I have nothing to offer, Mr. Chairman, except to say that this is in the normal course of the ACU ESP activity. I do want to express yet again my pride and satisfaction in that committee, in its excellence, in its skill, and in the quality of its work.
Great, thank you, Mr. Varnador. Any further discussion?
No.
Please vote. Great. Okay, on to item FO four, an update on the potential parcel tax ballot measure, Superintendent.
Thank you, President Barrera. I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Bernie Reinderson, and I think he, in conjunction with a supporting consultant, Larry Reamer, are going to brief us on their research to date on the parcel tax consideration.
Thank you, President Barrera, members of the board. Late last year, the board directed staff to look at potential revenue sources that could assist the district through the budget crisis. This item and the item that follows it are two items that staff has been working on to look at ways to address the revenue side of the budget crisis. And the parcel tax is available to school districts to go to the voters, it does require a two-thirds vote, to raise revenue for operational educational programs, that's as opposed to the bond measures that we passed in Prop S. So, under the board's direction, we retained a consultant, Mr. Larry Reamer, who's here this morning, and we have started this process with some public opinion surveying, really to gauge some of the public's thoughts about a parcel tax. This evening is really a status report for the board of the ongoing work that we're doing, and we'll be coming back to the board probably in May or June with some additional information and putting more details on what some of the options for a type of a parcel tax measure that the board could consider placing on the ballot in November. This is the board's decision, it's not a decision that you need to make tonight, this is really just an update for you as to where we are, and Mr. Reamer and I will be coming back to you in a couple of months after we do some more community outreach and some more work with our educational staff to see what kind of program we could put together if we had the revenue from a parcel tax option. What we found in this survey is that, and Mr. Reamer will get into more details, is that there is support out there from the community, from voters, to look at a parcel tax, but we've got more work to do and we've got some more study to do. So with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Reamer up to the microphone to give the board a brief summary of the survey results.
Thank you all. Are we going to put this on the?
There we go.
First of all, I'd like to just explain for a second what the purpose of this survey was. The purpose of the survey, I did to a contract with your board over the summer to try to find, try to find a formula that could potentially be a successful parcel tax. The survey was conducted with that in mind, as we've done in the past many times with surveys or focus groups. During the course of the survey, we found things out and discarded options and entered into new options, so we were actually attempting to look for, if you will, a formula that had the potential for public support. It is our plan, as Mr. Reinderson said, to return to this board after we do some more outreach and some more research, and before we would bring to you a final package that we would potentially recommend for you to put on the ballot, we would do more survey research, more rigorous research on a specific proposal. But the purpose of the survey was to see what kinds of proposals may or may not be supported, and the reason I bring this up is, I got a call yesterday that people who had seen the board documents were questioning what we were doing and why, and I ended up speaking to my good friend Eric Bruvold about what we were doing, and he didn't understand the methodology, and so I wanted to explain it a little bit earlier in this presentation, and if you read the details, you'll know why. So the survey was conducted between October twenty-fifth and twenty-eighth, two thousand and nine. The margin error of the full sample is four-point-four percent, subsamples or smaller groups have a lesser margin of error, and there's also in here some prior surveys that we have access to that we conducted or had conducted on behalf of different efforts we did for Unified District. The first thing we did was we asked a basic question of what's the right direction, wrong track question that we always ask, and I think that it's pretty graphic to see that the state of California is clearly going in the wrong direction, the minds of the voters, and that that perception has increased. The reason I am using the May two thousand and eight survey as kind of a benchmark, which is about eighteen, sixteen or eighteen months before this survey, is that's the survey that we conducted prior to placing Prop S on the ballot, so we were measuring, we were measuring public attitudes before we had did another spending measure. This is a really important question that we always ask, is whether or not the public perceives funding for, is needed for the San Diego Public Schools. It's a real predictor, in our experience, of whether or not people are willing to support a funding measure, whether they're going to support a bond measure, a parcel tax, or any kind of funding, is the basic question, is do they need it? It's really very clear and very, very simple. And what's interesting about this is if you look back to the June ninety-eight and September ninety-eight figures, those are Prop MM, which many of you might remember was a bond measure we did, now it's eleven years ago, it's almost twelve years ago, and we were measuring, monitoring the public's perception and need for the schools. And you can see that just before Prop MM passed in September of ninety-eight, the perception of need was almost eighty-one percent, if you take the great need and the some need, that's what we look at, and we, the great need is what we call intensity. Whereas, if you look at the need in the pre-Prop S survey, it's not quite as high as the Prop MM one, but you still have seventy-five percent expressing need, and the one we just did, seventy-four percent, that's basically the same, this is a question we asked of the full sample. So that's, you know, they saw that need. I don't know how I ask somebody to move the slides along, there we go. And then we asked about the serious problems facing San Diego, and we, again, we did some comparisons in the condition of local economy affected state budget cuts. And what's interesting, I mean, as would be expected, the extremely and very serious problem of the local economies at seventy-three percent. problem of the local economy is at 73 percent. No surprise, and it's up much higher from the, the pre-Prop S survey. But the effect of state local budget cuts, of state budget cuts on local public schools is actually basically the same, maybe down a tad. And that was interesting to us because that was before we went through last year's round of budget cuts. And it suggests that all during 2009, while your Board was struggling very, very hard with very serious cuts, that the message to the public was, you know, not there, or maybe it had already reached saturation, but it did not increase. Then we asked a series of questions about the schools, how serious the problems are. And these are ranked in order of the seriousness of the problem. Wait, go back a second. I don't know who's doing that. Oh, you are, Bernie.
I am.
Yeah. These are ranked in order of seriousness of the problem. So, you know, is this a serious problem? This is not the order that we asked it in. We asked them in a different order, and we randomized the, the ask, so it got asked at different times. So these are the serious problems that are perceived. Laying off school nurses, counselors, and teachers, cutting arts and music, keep going, cuts to vocational education, increasing class size, and cuts to career education. Just stop here for a second before you get to gangs and youth violence. So all these, all these cuts that have happened that affect the classroom, that go right to the, to the mission of, of the district, increasing class size, vocational education, career education, cuts to staff, are seen as a, as a top-tier serious problem. Now, if you go to the next ones, these are not seen as unserious, but there's definitely a drop-off. Gangs and youth violence is serious, extremely very serious at 55 percent and about the same as 18 months earlier, but, you know, is not seen as, as serious as the others. Wait, go back, Bernie. And then you, you take it to, to the bottom one, and we always ask this question about the amount you pay in property taxes, whether or not that's seen as a serious problem or not, because after all, we're examining the likelihood of raising property taxes. And only, it actually diminished the number of people from May of '08 to October of '09 who saw the amount you pay in property taxes as being an extremely, a very serious problem. And it's, you know, from 36 to 30 percent is a pretty dramatic drop. So, that tells us that that's not on the top of their minds. Now, that's not to say if we didn't come along and try to double people's property taxes, they wouldn't revolt. We know they would. But it means that the standard arguments of, oh, God, you'll never get property tax increases, you know. Then, this is the, this is, this is the question that we get, we actually get to at the end of the survey. And I'm bringing it in, 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 at the beginning of this presentation, or near the beginning of the presentation, to show you that this is where we get to. We get to the fact that, and again, we tinkered with the questions as we went through the evenings of the survey, that there is support at about the 64 percent level of San Diego school ballot measure temporary to provide emergency funds to local schools to offset severe state cuts, a $98 a year parcel, a $98 parcel tax to end at five years. And what's different about that, then you'll see as we go through the rest of the presentation, is that it is an emergency measure, temporary, and expires in five years. Those were very critical points. And the noes in this are 22 percent. And you'll see in the survey, the noes hover in the twenties, they may get up to 20 percent. They never, they never in any iteration, you know, you get, you know, way high in the high thirties. They may get to the mid-thirties, but not the high thirties. This is the ballot title that we asked. Now, I'm gonna go back to the beginning of the survey, if you will. This is the ballot title that we asked at the very beginning of the survey, where we were trying to test what people would, would support. The language in the ballot title is very important. And if we had proposed this, this tax to you today, we would not use this language because we've now conducted the survey and learned. But this began, this was our best guess at the time. To offset severe state funding cuts to K-12 schools, improve student achievement, college and job preparation by preventing layoffs to math, science, and English teacher, improving labs, technology, and equipment used in career vocational education, upgrading classroom technology to improve learning and teaching, rehiring teachers, aides, counselors, and school nurses, preventing drastic cuts back in school police, after-school tutoring, and dropout prevention programs, shall the district levy $150 parcel annual education tax on buildings and property improvement with citizens oversight, audits, and low-income senior exemptions in every school receiving needed funds. So that was our initial take. And you can see that it, that that's the top one, that that received a 54 percent support. Then we tested it down to $120 and $98. And then we compared it to a $90 test that we did in 2008. And you can see that the support actually, it's kinda weird because the support actually decreased at 120 and then jumped a little bit at 98. But 98 is very similar to 90 that we did 18 months earlier, 56 and 57 percent. We tested positive arguments. Good schools are the key to equality education, et cetera. 67 percent agree with that. The key to a strong economy is a well-educated workforce. This measure will give us quality academic programs. 68 percent, you know, were more inclined, or some were inclined to vote. Every child deserves a good teacher. And I'm just going through this quickly so we're not here for two hours with me going through everything. And then we did a revote. And you can see on the $98 a year, which was what we began to focus on as we began to figure this out, the revote gets us, you know, a stronger intensity, but still keeps us at 56 percent. We tried some opposition arguments. The politicians don't get it. You gotta get rid of these tax measures and send a message. We're not gonna tolerate any more mismanagement of taxpayer dollars. 47 percent actually found that more inclined, or some were more inclined to vote, no, based on that argument. Last November, we passed the $2 billion measure, enough's enough, 42 percent. Unemployment's on the rise, basically the economic argument, 40 percent. And you can see here, from the initial vote to the vote after the supportive statements, to the vote after the negative statements, then in fact, if anything, the measure, the, the support stayed pretty much the same, but actually lifted a little bit within the margin of error. And, you know, and the undecided stayed where they are, and the negatives pretty much stayed where they are. Then we asked the question about the $98. And we did this after, after we'd been through about 300 of our questions and saying, well, let's try this and see. And it pushed us up to 64 percent. And you can see it dramatically, I think, in the next graph. Is that right, Bernie? Yeah. You can see in the next graph that, you know, we moved to 64, the, the noes drop, and the undecideds move a little. Now, 64 is not two-thirds. 64 still is not a winning, winning margin. But 64 percent with a 14 percent undecided is a viable option to further investigate, to really take a look at and see, okay, now we know our starting point. Let's see how we craft it. What are the programs that we should or shouldn't include? What are the safeguards that we need? How can we build our community coalition to get behind it? So, at this point, I think that we are comfortable with saying, we now have a starting point to spend the next several months going out in the community. We're gonna hold meetings in every, probably in every cluster or some iteration of that, and meet with community leaders, and see if we can build the support it would take to get us over the top. Because as I think you'll see in the next slide...
Larry, Larry, there's a whole bunch of other slides that the Board has. And I think, in the interest of time, are there any in particular that you wanna highlight? Or, because this really is the, the crux of it here.
That's the bottom line, right there.
This is really the bottom line. And as...
Okay, I mean, I, if the Board wants, I mean, I, I think you all have it in your packet, and I can go through the rest. The, you know, the next slide shows what are the uses that people wanna, wanna put to this. This is if, you know, the most important uses of, of, of funds from this measure. And you can see really near the top, preventing the layoffs to the math, science, and English teacher, preventing the cuts. But you're right, Bernie, we don't need to go through, unless the Board wants to hear more iterations of this, we, we don't really need to go through this. The one thing I think I'd wanna stress is...
Maybe the different approaches, Larry, the slide I have up here?
No, I, go to, can you go to 26?
There we go.
26 and 27. This is not an argument. We're asking kids, we're asking voters the accuracy of these statements. The reason that this is important because it gives us a sense of what their perceptions are. And I think the, you know, not all kids go to, go to colleges, so providing an education, career technical training in our schools is important. We know that career technical education is important. We've spent a lot of time and money, and your Board and your district have spent a ton of that trying to make that happen. So these are, these are kind of the, the view of the, of the public on, trying to ask their objective. I just wanna go now to the next slide, which rank orders these. And look at the very last one. You know, you're asking whether this is, you know, an accurate statement. San Diego voters recently passed a local school bond measure, right? We just, we just worked like hell to pass a $2.1 billion school bond measure, and it just went past, and they voted for it.
And they forgot it.
And they forgot it. And they forgot it. And I'm not trying to insult the public with this, because I don't blame them in some ways. They're busy, and, and this is just something that happened. I bring this up to show that the public's attention is such that if you focus on urgent critical needs, that's what gets their attention. You know, John, I'm sorry?
Well, but I think my response to that is, the reason that they didn't notice it was it was a level tax, that it continued an existing tax. Had there been a dime or, or a couple of dollars more than what they were already paying, that would've been a different response.
Well, you know, and I, and my response is, and you could be really right about that, is that if we get to do a follow-up poll, we should actually ask them if they've noticed their tax bill going up, as opposed to just, are you concerned about property taxes? Right? Because, we're not the only ones. The community colleges have passed two bonds, and that went right on the tax bill, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a good one.
So...
And wait, one more slide, Bernie. Can you, 28? All right. So, in the May 2008 survey, this was the initial vote on Prop S, which passed with 68 percent of the vote, which is virtually identical to the 64 percent that, you know, we feel that we're at right now, or potentially at right now with, with a parcel tax that would have a sunset, and it would be an emergency measure. So, I, obviously, I'll answer more questions.
So, President Ferrera and members of the Board, I think, from our point of view, we're encouraged by this survey. We wanna move forward to, so to speak, put meat on the bone and bring it back to the Board for additional discussion and consideration. Certainly, this poll is not a decision-making tool for you. It's only one bit of information from one point in time. But I think it gives us an indication that the voters of our community support education, and they want to be able to do something. And with that indication, we'd like to move forward as a staff and with our consultant to put some more details together, to do some more community outreach. Come back to you in May or June for the Board to consider whether to move forward.
We have some public comment that I'd like to take now, and then have a final Board discussion. So if we could start with Sandy Matson, and then Jean-Louis Cocoro, Doug Porter, Ramon Espinal, and Lisa Berlanga.
Hi, President Ferrera and other school Board members. My name is Sandy Matson. I'm with the McKinley Elementary Parent Teacher Club. And I just really wanted to come up and say how excited we are that you're exploring this possibility. We've learned the last three years that we can no longer afford to let our children be the victims of the Sacramento politics. We need local control to ensure our children's education is truly protected. At Parents at McKinley, we've advocated for years to have a parcel tax put on the ballot. We know San Diegan's support education. We voted for Proposition S. But when we did that, we never imagined that we would have well-equipped, overcrowded classrooms right next to classrooms that are sitting empty because we've had to let our teachers go. At McKinley, we've seen parents and teachers and administrators come together to put together programs that we work. We fought hard to implement and retain our international baccalaureate program. We were one of the pilot schools for the 15-to-1 programs for the K-3, and saw our kids really excel. But this year, we now have classrooms of 26 and plus in our K-3, and we're seeing our kids really struggle. We'd like to see San Diego take control of what is happening with funding for education to make sure that we have the money to fund what we know works and provide a buffer from what's happening at the state budget cuts. If you put this on the ballot, you can definitely count on the McKinley community to be there, to go door-to-door, and do all that we need to make sure that this passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Member. My name is Jean-Louis Cocoro. I am a parent of two daughters in San Diego High School. I'm a property owner and also a business owner. My girls are very much involved in sports at San Diego High School. It's very difficult to explain to our children, I think in general, the reason and the consequences of the budget cuts. It's also very difficult to explain to them that eventually the sports that they're practicing that could actually help them reach college might be cut. This is why I believe that the district and the, the community with the district need more control, need more control of their funding, and need more local funding. So this is why I am supporting this emergency parcel cut, uh, parcel tax, I'm sorry. Thank you.
My name is Doug Porter, and I live at 4140 Mississippi Street. And I'm the proud parent of Haley Porter, who attends this school for creative and performing arts. I've attended many school board meetings over the last couple of years where the budget's been discussed, and it's been a real learning experience for me. I've learned a lot. And I've also really learned that the budget process that takes place in Sacramento is ultimately what determines what you guys have to do. The budget process in Sacramento has more in common with Alice in Wonderland than it does with Mr. Smith Goes to Washington. Having a child has been a profound experience for me. I've learned to reorder my priorities, to do everything in my power to nurture her and to protect her future. A critical part of my responsibilities as a parent is ensuring that she gets a first-class education, not some dumbed-down routine of tests and an environment that places limits on her growth. I want her to have the ability to critically understand the world we live in, and for her to become the best at whatever she chooses to do with her life. Second rate doesn't cut it here. Our children deserve no less than a blue ribbon education. As a parent, I want to congratulate the district for looking for ways to replace the funds that Sacramento has stolen from us. I believe the parcel step, tax is a step in the right direction. I also believe that it's time to change the basic nature of the conversation about what's going on in our state. People need to understand that what's really going on in our state amounts to nothing less than an all-out assault on the institution of public education. To the politicians in Sacramento, if they happen to be listening on the TV, I say no mas. To you and everybody in this room, I say, together we must find a way to stand up for our children's future, a blue ribbon future. Thank you.
Superintendent Koba, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Ramon Espinal, Rosa Parks Elementary School. As an educator and a parent in this district, I would like to thank and appreciate and express my appreciation to the Board for considering this measure and for providing the leadership for us to come together as a community to try to find extra revenues to stabilize and increase local funding for our schools. Our community supports for all the initiatives in the last 15 years, i.e. Prop O, Prop MM, and Prop S, which I supported and campaigned for, demonstrate that our community understands the importance of providing our district the resources to carry on its mission of educating our students. I am in favor of exploring local sources of funding, and believe that people in the city of San Diego can come together to accomplish such endeavors. I am not just willing to pay a little bit more money in my taxes every year for a period of time, but if you decide to proceed with this effort, I am also willing to campaign and mobilize support for the passage of this initiative. Thank you for listening, and I hope that all of you support the initiative as soon as possible so that we can move forward on the task of informing and educating people in our communities about the importance of supporting this revenue enhancement initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, President Ferrera, Superintendent Koba, and Board Members. I'm Lisa Berlanga with the California Charter School Association. I'm glad to hear that your initial surveys were very positive on the parcel tax. As I think I was up here earlier, the charter schools are more than happy to support this tax with you. But we do hope that charter schools will be included equitably. So we hope that maybe if you continue further surveys, that some charter school questions might be thrown in there. We hope that if you do have community meetings, that the charter school communities would be invited, or there would be, excuse me, or be a specific meeting for charter school folks, perhaps. The expectation from the charter community is that we would get 10 percent of a parcel tax, as we are 10 percent of your population. 10 percent of your population. 10% of your parents are charter school parents and charter school students. So we hope that that would be taken into consideration. With Prop MM, charter schools were not specified at all, although some work was done to schools residing on Prop 39 facilities. In Prop S, we were specifically called out with discretionary funds and with other work, but if you add up all those, we're about 5%, 6% and that includes the charter brewery. Money's going towards that. So we're hoping with the parcel tax, it will be an equitable 10% and if we can negotiate that, the charter school community is more than happy to also go out and help mobilize to get this parcel tax passed. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks for the new name.
Okay, I wonder, we start with comment, Ms. Nakamura.
Yeah, I have thought an awful lot about this over the last few months. In fact, I wanted to put, you know, increase the rate of, you know, Prop S even a little bit higher, but I also wanted to put a parcel tax on the ballot when we were working so hard on Proposition S. I felt that a parcel tax, that it was something that we should be able to do and the economy has changed since then significantly and I have, I have more concerns than I did and I think the voting population actually is feeling the same way if you look at some of this polling data. But in the face of, you know, the crisis that we're facing in our economy, you know, I think that we do need to take back local control. I think it is, this is the only way that we can protect our schools, but I've had my differences with fellow members on the Board of Education as to how money is spent up here. And before I would give a definitive yes on this, I would want to make sure that it was very clearly laid out exactly how this parcel tax was going to be spent and for what purpose. I think the community, the citizens of San Diego deserve that and I'd like to see more, you know, I am interested in moving forward with this and asking more probative questions, but in also designing this. You know, I would point out that with regard to arts and music, you know, it was in, you know, on the polling, it was the second highest rating among the second ranking for this. So if it's a way we can protect the college competitiveness of our students with, whether it's arts and music, extracurricular activities, athletics, teachers in the classroom, whatever it takes, I want to make sure that we actually put this parcel tax on in a way that protects those things that this community loves and cherishes. So I want something very tightly worded, but I am interested in moving forward.
Yeah, well, I very strongly support the idea of giving the voters an option to support our schools financially in this way. I mean, it's encouraging what the polls show, but I think it's also just very important that we really lay out what is involved in the situation. Obviously, we have had, this is an emergency situation. We have had to make severe cuts already. We're operating the district this year, just this year alone, with 1,000 fewer employees than we had last year, trying to do the same job and get the same results. We've certainly, I was very impressed at the town hall meetings where people were looking at what are priorities, but also people's willingness to speak up and say, we really support our public schools and we want to find some way to properly fund them. And the reality is that people are much more confident in sending their local money to their local schools than they are sending it through some general tax to Sacramento or Washington, which is laundered and comes back in some other form and not quite as much as we put in. So I think there's a very strong feeling about, as Ms. Nakamura was saying, of local control. We have a lot of instability in funding and education at the state level and this is just one element of bringing a little bit more stability to our schools, our local funding. We're basically saying, we here in San Diego care about education and we're going to do everything we can to get our fair share from Sacramento and Washington, but we're not going to just wait for that. We're actually going to stand up and do something ourselves. It's an opportunity for everybody to contribute. It's really like paying our local dues to having a positive local society. So I think this is really exciting.
Mr. DeBak?
Well, I support parcel tax. I have from the get-go, so the issue will be whether it passes or not and we'll find out. But you know, I have to say one thing, and we did learn this, I think we should have learned it, that when San Francisco passed their parcel tax, they had an MOU with all their, with their employees before they ever got the parcel tax. Because if you go out blind and you've asked a parcel tax and then it becomes a fight over what the resources are, you're not going to pass the parcel tax. You need to have that agreement upfront. It's like negotiate the provisions with your groups about what the parcel tax was going to mean to them before you go out and get it because what will happen is you'll have all this fighting over, you know, and they won't support the tax. So their basic advice was get an agreement with your employee group, particularly the teachers, before you ever put it on the ballot. And I think that's a must. So, you know, whatever, while I support a parcel tax as a solution and I'm not altogether think, I don't believe that the $98 will solve our problems, it's better than nothing.
I think that Mr. DeBak is correct in that before we go out to do a parcel tax, we need to be very clear how we're going to spend the money. While the people are more than willing to support the schools, the people also are always asking us how are we spending the money? So I, and I certainly, I support the parcel tax, but again, it has to be that we do our due diligence before we take it to the voters, that we're very clear about how the allocations are going to be spent and they're spent in the appropriate way to enhance all of the district. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd agree with what everybody said and I do think that the next steps are crucial now. We talk a lot in this community about the fact that we've got so many people who care so deeply about the state of our public schools and we often disagree with each other on, you know, what's the best thing to do for our schools. And that's healthy and I think it's important that we always, you know, are going to have that level of engagement. This is an opportunity though, in front of us, to pull together everybody regardless of, you know, the way we feel about any particular issue. This is about whether we have a healthy public education system and it is a system that's been under assault from Sacramento for the past several years. And the people of San Diego clearly in the polling results are ready to step up and ready to support public education. But I think the question is for us as a district, are we now able to go out and build a coalition among everybody who cares about our schools, our teachers, our parents, our charter school community, our business community? Are we able to pull together a coalition now to make a statement to our local community that we're ready to, we're ready to support our schools? And I think we've got an opportunity to do that in front of us and I think that's the next step in this process.
Can we do another round?
Please, Ms. Nakamura.
Yeah. Mr. Anderson, I know that there is an initiative to lower the, or an effort to lower the threshold. Right now, it's two-thirds vote, which, you know, we had, you know, 68% with Proposition S, which I'm very proud of, and that would have passed this parcel tax. But the, you know, the threshold for a parcel tax is 66%. I mean, we're, you know, we're, as for Proposition S, it was only, you know, it was a threshold of 55%. What are we, can you tell us what the state of that is?
The status of that is there have been two attempts. There have been legislative attempts, a bill was pending in the legislature last year, it'd probably be again this year, to lower it to 55%, but that would require a vote of all of the voters in California. There is an initiative that has been filed for signature gathering to do the same thing. So if either of those, if the legislature or if through the initiative process qualifies a measure for the ballot, it would probably end up on the November ballot, which would not help us this time around. So, and in terms of timing, elections come every two years. The time seems to be now is when the funds are needed. We will probably be in the situation with this of a two-thirds vote because those changes won't occur in time to lower it for this November.
So we have a steeper hill to climb?
Yes.
Any further comments?
Just one.
Mr. Reimer wanted to say something.
On that one in particular, one of the risks that we might realize, and I think that that's part of the polling process that people will have to come up with, is when a parcel tax fails in a community, what are the chances that a parcel tax that comes back later will?
Pass.
Will pass. See, you know, we've had a constant support for our bond issues. We've had a positive response for all the initiatives that we raised, but if you look at some of the histories of communities that have tried and lost bond issues or parcel taxes, they don't seem to pass anything else. So I want to make sure that we do whatever we got to do to get that public opinion in the right place before we go ahead and stick our neck out and put out a, you know, certainly want to get the money. Nobody's arguing that we don't need it, except those that are going to have to pay for it. And if they decide that, then we do really need to know that upfront and we need to have our homework done so that we don't risk that we will be facing a series of defeats. I don't want to go there.
Larry, did you? Larry, come up to the microphone.
Just to quickly respond to Ms. Nakamura, Mr. DeBak, is that first of all, with regard to the initiatives about Mr. Anderson was addressing, is that we will know by the time we get here in June or July what the status of those are and they could inform our decision. So if it looks like it's going to be on the same ballot, we may not want to go in November, but we got to get ready. Or we may want to go in November anyway. I mean, but we got to get ready. But we'll know that. The signature gathering, I've been in touch with them. I wish them well. I wish that, I mean, they need a million and a half dollars in the next 60 days to collect their signatures. So if anybody wants to step up to the plate and write a check, that would be great. But we will know that. And the legislature, the challenge with the legislature, I've talked to Monica about this several times, is that you need Republican votes to move this onto the ballot or to move it forward and the Republicans in the legislature are irredeemably, you know, anti any kind of change in the tax structure. So that's the challenge there. In terms of Mr. DeBak about the option of whether or not we, you know, we could pass another one if we fail the first time, I mean, I was well aware of that and I want to, I don't want to spoil an unblemished record in San Diego of passing these things. And we will make, give it our best shot when we get back here and we won't be asking you to put this on the ballot if we don't think we have a real fighting chance. And even with that, it'll require all of us and then some to make it happen. I don't know if you have any more questions for me while I'm here.
I think, just the only other comment I'd make, and there is, as you meant, there's a bill in the legislature authored by Senator Joe Semidion that would allow the threshold to, would allow a ballot measure to go forward to lower the threshold to 55%. And I would encourage people to lobby the legislators to pass that bill because what that bill is saying is even if, as we know, the Republican caucus in Sacramento, even if every member of that Republican caucus does not themselves want to vote to raise taxes, they should give people the right to vote themselves. And we're seeing strong support here, you know, in San Diego. We want the right to vote. We think we can probably pass this measure at two-thirds, but if we get, you know, 64, 65% of people who vote for this measure and it fails because of the two-thirds requirement, again, that's not a democratic process. And so allowing that threshold, allowing simply the voters to vote on whether to lower that threshold to 55% is something that I think only, you know, an extreme ideology would say, we're not going to give voters the right to do that. So I would encourage people to lobby members of the legislator to allow that question to come to the ballot.
You know, we have, just as I make this pitch every opportunity I get, but on February 20th and 21st, the PTA is sending up a, you know, the Sacramento Safari to lobby our legislators and we will be talking directly about, you know, some of the district concerns that we have regarding the class size penalty, et cetera. We'll be briefing those folks. It's a chance to be trained by our superb legislative analyst up in Sacramento about what the district issues are. Go up to Sacramento, meet with the PTA and talk about more general statewide issues, but that should be something we put in the hopper for that. And anyone interested in participating on the statewide PTA, this two-day trip up to Sacramento, it's posted on our website, the information that you can sign up for, but we're going to be doing some outreach with regard to, you know, that entire group of people. I think it's a good chance for them to learn how to lobby, how to be part of this process and how to have an impact, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Reimer. Okay, we will now move on to item FO5, development of new revenue sources from sponsorship and advertising.
Superintendent? Thank you. And if I could ask staff to put up the next PowerPoint.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson wants to say something before you get started.
As the staff is coming to prepare for that presentation, I want to just share this with the other board members and I want to say I'm not opposed to us, I'm not opposed to us generating revenue. I just think it is inappropriate to have one of the vendors presenting tonight when in our board documentation it says that we have had several sponsorship firms contacting us and as a public entity, we need to give them all equal access. So I would ask that the staff, just the staff does the presentation and then I would ask board members to look at this document I just gave you and then on the back of it, on the back in the middle column, you'll see that, this is an article that came out in our recent magazine, School Board Members Magazine, February issue, and it talks about there's a lot of, because of budget crisis, there's a lot of partners, businesses wanting to advertise to our students. And there's some things that the board should do prior to engaging in that and I would just ask that we consider doing these things before we make any, in any attempt to, and as in this item the board's been presenting with, it says that initially, as proposed by this Four Visual Media Company, that we not take action on that tonight, that we do these items first, develop board policy before we do anything first.
And if I may just begin my presentation, I'd like to respond.
Yes, most certainly.
That certainly was not the intent here. The intent of this measure, this presentation before the board is to ask the board to discuss and give staff direction about the whole topic of advertising and sponsorships. And I bring forward this one company as an example and it certainly was not presented to be an approval of that company or what their approach is, but to provide the board with an example of a whole range of things that we would, we could explore and then bring back to the board. So this, I also have a parent who I'd like to have speak as a member of the public on website advertising. So if I could, after I make my presentation, they can speak as public members and have their three minutes, but I would like to just start and go through this brief presentation to initiate just the, you know, the board to think about this.
I just, we want to get a comment by Ms. DeBak.
Well, I was here for Channel One. I was here for insider presentation of, the presentation for privatizing some of our schools. I'm not going to name, well, there's a whole bunch of people that had, I'll call it inside tracks. I honestly believe that Sheila's on the right track, that you, if you want to have a discussion about the concept, you don't need to have a vendor tell you, lead you through that discussion. What you need to have is a concept discussion around whether or not the district believes as a policy that there's certain access to the media is appropriate. Now, I can remember, I brought this up once, I had advertising questions on school buses and then it turned out to be illegal because the DMV didn't want it. And I understand the pressures. I mean, certainly I'd like to have some ways for us to generate income, but I don't remember that the advertisers, that we're going to put signs on the sides of buses were the ones that were brought here to make that discussion. So that's the issue for me. I want, basically, you know, if you want to lead a discussion about the concept, that's fine. If you want to use media who have an advocacy role to do it, I don't agree with that. And so that's where I'm at. I said, you know, my take on this is if Four Visual Media wants to make a presentation, let them make it, but not in a public setting. let them make it, but not in a public setting like this.
Okay, so, Mr. Rehneson, I think you're sensing the discomfort with the board of having a particular company be part of the presentation, so why don't you just lead us through this presentation?
Will do, will do. And there are really two areas that I want to talk to the board about tonight. One is the revenue potentials of website advertising, and secondly, the revenue potentials of school site advertising. And the company that was mentioned is just one example of how we could explore that. And I appreciate the discussion in general. In the area of website advertising, I think it is new territory. It hasn't been done on school sites across the country, but we are also in new territory with $300 million worth of revenue cuts to this district. So when we went out and did town hall meetings, came up several times, what are you doing about generating revenue? Our website has about 1.5 million visitors per month. So it really is a financial asset that the district could utilize in the same way as you could utilize real estate. And generating revenue from that website with website ads that are carefully controlled and approved under standards developed by this board and approved where we have total control of that would be a way that we could possibly generate revenues. So the question is, is how much revenue could we generate? What kind of controls would we develop? And what kind of partners would we work with in that website advertising? Our vendor that we already have for our website, School Wires, in speaking to that company about the potential of website advertising for districts around the country, was very excited to possibly investigate with us how the 5,000 schools that are in the School Wires family, we could possibly work with them to do the technology and bring in national advertisers, National Geographic, PBS, those kind of quality advertisers that we might be able to attract to our website. We could also work with companies like Reach Local or Google Advertising. But what I'm asking tonight is for the board to consider this possibility. With 1.5 million visitors a month, we could possibly generate over $100,000 a year in revenue from just our district website. And then beyond that, we could go and do some of the other channels and the school websites, generating $2,000 to $4,000, $5,000 a month per school. But I think the revenue goal for our website advertising would be in the $100,000 a year or more. As an example, to compare that, our cost of running websites throughout the district is about $100,000 a year. So really, it would be allowing us to generate revenue to recover the costs that this district spends to have that type of communication. Just as an example of website sponsorships, this is a page from PBS.org, a website for children from Public Broadcasting System, and the arrow that I'm pointing to is a sponsor on one of their pages of a site that's visited by children that is sponsored by Chuck E. Cheese.
I can support this, as long as it's not Chuck E. Cheese.
Right, right.
Okay. You want Dunkin' Donuts?
No. I've done my time.
Right, I know, I've been through that also. In looking at our new website, there's a couple of areas of real estate where we could generate revenue from ads. And I've had the benefit of working with one of our parents, Mr. Brock Flint, who I'm gonna ask to step up and make a comment just in a moment, who works in the industry, but he also has a child in kindergarten at one of our schools. And thanks to him, he helped me with some of these graphics, just to show us where we could sell ads on our website. So here's an example of our main page. I put an ad for Total and another ad up there on the top. And we could put an ad for whatever we sell, and maybe work with School Wires to develop the technology to do this. Here's our food services page with an ad for Campbell's Soup. You know, that is a page visited by people interested in food, and we might be able to sell some there. So there are real estate within our website that we could look at. So if I could, I'd like to invite Brock Flint, who is a parent, who is not trying to sell us anything, but he is a professional in the industry. And Brock, could you come up and just give us your perspective about website advertising? Brock is a representative of a company that sells website ads, and he's not trying to sell us anything, but I thought as a parent, it would be, provide good technical input for us.
Thank you. I'm definitely not trying to sell you anything. I do stand here as a new parent in the school district. I have a son in EBS school, he's in kindergarten now, and I have another little rug rat that's coming up right behind him. So we're getting engaged with the school, and as everyone, I think, with all the differences that I've noticed tonight and throughout the district, there's one common denominator, and that is obviously the budget. And if there's any way that you can capitalize on certain things that you already have, i.e., your website, it's, you know, it's a new age, it's, you know, this digital revolution that we're going through as a community and as a culture, really revolves around, as Bernie so aptly put, online real estate. And you guys have a great resource. You have millions of visitors per month, and that holds a lot of value. Just to give you an idea where, you know, where the numbers come from, you know, with the demographics of the visitors to your site, it's really sought after by a lot of companies. You could charge anywhere, for every thousand people that come to your site, $10 to $12 for those thousands. So if you get up in that million-dollar range and you start adding in your other school sites to that, you could be talking hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue for the entire district. So I would encourage you to continue the conversation, whatever companies you want to entertain. Again, I'm not standing here as a representative, because my company actually doesn't even handle that. I was just introduced, or to Bernie before, and, you know, the conversation sparked, and he's got a brilliant idea that you guys could really capitalize on, as long as it's done with taste, as long as it's done with tact. I would encourage you, as a parent and as a professional in the space, to consider it. That's it. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Brock.
Yeah.
So what I would do with the board's consensus and approval is continue to explore how we would do this. We don't have staff to sell advertising. We don't have staff to develop the technology. But with good parent support like Brock and some of his contacts, maybe working with School Wires, my hope would be, during this budget process, by the time we get to July, I would be able to come back to the board with a more specific proposal and details about using our website and considering advertising. So nothing specific tonight, I just want to know if the board wants me to move forward on that. Now, maybe before going to board discussion, we have also been approached by other companies to advertise on school sites. I've presented this one company as an example, but their concept is selling ads to companies on lunch tables or in banner ads on schools. The concept that they presented could possibly generate for our high schools anywhere from $40,000 to $50,000 or more a year per high school. If you look at a pilot program possibly of 10 or more high schools, letting the schools decide if they want to participate, involving the school community in that decision, having total control over what the ad is and what it's done, we could put together a pilot project that could generate a half a million dollars next year for our high schools. So just that concept alone, we would go out and see what other companies are available to participate, go through the right process to secure a company. But the concept of having that type of advertising at school sites that could generate that amount of money is something I wanted to make the board aware of and get your feeling and direction as to where to proceed. So with that, I look forward to getting your direction.
What I certainly can support is that Mr. Coburn and staff develop a policy, because
it is true, this is new frontier. And I think before we start looking for people, we need to have a policy that addresses all the questions that you have in here and any other questions that come up. So that way, we're very clear throughout the district. We know that people go to individual schools to do things, and sometimes the schools may let them, but if we need to have a district-wide policy so that everybody's on the same page when it comes to this, as we enter into this new frontier. So that's what I can support, that we engage in a dialogue about a district policy as far as this particular, you know, revenue generation. You know, I'm all for, I'm one for, go look, go look, go look. So I'm all for generating revenue, but I'm also, we have to be accountable for what we are doing with the children. And this article speaks to the fact that our responsibility is making sure that we're not branding the children before their time.
Dr. Rehmert?
First of all, I think it's really important we have this discussion, because as Mr. Rehneson said, it did come up at the meetings, and people were being creative and looking at different ways to raise revenue. So I think it's a very legitimate conversation. At the same time, I have a lot of concerns with just a bias towards schools being a commercial-free zone. I mean, we have movies come out with action figures and a special cookie and bedspread and curtains, and, you know, you can, parents get sucked into all kinds of things because of this, you know, very, very creative marketing to children, and this is just giving one more venue for that. The issue that you brought up too is about, you know, school sites versus website. And I think one of the things that we're talking about another way earlier in the week is that, that which could produce the most money, I think, could potentially be the most harmful, and that which would produce the least money would be the least harmful. And by harmful, I mean exerting an overdue influence on children as consumers. I think there are ways to look at some sorts of corporate contributions where corporations are given recognition as responsible contributing community members. I don't know what the example would be, but, you know, on public radio or something, there's a mention of an organization that contributes, but it's not the regular commercial type of advertising. So I just think we need to proceed very cautiously. I am very concerned about any direct on-school-site advertising in children's faces. I mean, they're already bringing it on their lunch pails and everything else, so we have to be careful.
Yeah, I didn't really like Coca-Cola scoreboards. So I'm, you know, yeah, I think this is a real can of worms. There's a lot in this article that everybody here should read. The question of how do you select a company that is responsible, not only in what the product they sell, but also responsible within the communities of their, I'll call it, their attitude toward social issues? It's a big can of worms. You'd have, how many people would you have to filter out the quality of the people that were advertising? Is it just the ones that have the most money and offer you the best deal? That's okay. But then they end up selling a product that's not good for kids, or that's not good for society? You know, how many cigarette companies would be glad to get on this? You know, well, that's a bad example, I wouldn't allow it. But the point is, there are some people that would maybe even selling things that are nutritionally stupid, that we wouldn't have served in our school cafeteria, but which would be willing to put a lot of money in this. So I'm not sure that we're prepared to screen the quality of the people and judge them against access to our kids or our parents. I'm not, I'm not, you know, you may want to explore it, that's okay if the board decides they want to explore it. I'd rather see people come up with specific RFPs, and if they're benign enough, I might approve them. But if they're, if I'm gonna go searching for them, that's not my, that's not my business. I think the public needs to pay for public education, and they expect it to be not commercial. And that's fine with me. But if they don't want to pay for it, and they want to let the legislature continue to stick it to us, they're gonna have more pressure like this year after year after year, and there's gonna be more and more tension about finding desperate ways to save yourselves when the real obligation for educating your kids is a public obligation. Period.
Yeah, I have been waiting for this conversation. Mr. Rehneson, I want to thank you for a very professional conversation, because it's always been out there on the edges of the community. Every time we have a budget crisis, you know, there's always someone that comes up and says, "Well, have you thought of this? And why don't we do that?" And it, you know, this is, I think, a viable way, but I agree with my colleagues that we need to develop a policy. No Chuck E. Cheese, you know, but, you know, total, things that promote, I think, a healthy lifestyle, you know, I think we could develop a policy guideline. Also, people that, you know, that have enough revenue to, you know, give a quality advertisement, something that isn't going to muddy up or to make our schools look junky. You know, we can have, you definitely can have design guidelines, you know, for this. And as far as the online revenue, I think it's very interesting that you've paired the online revenue with the cost that it is to run our websites. Because of the Sacramento Safari, I've been running through our elementary school websites, and even the new canned ones that we have could use, could be a little snappier and could look a little better. I think they don't look as good as our website that we've got up for the district as a whole. And I know that that's an area that, it's an expectation that parents have now, and it's an expectation, you know, that we have for the, to be able to communicate effectively with all of our communities. But I'll tell you what I really want to know. These two students over here are clicking and writing and looking through this, and I'm very interested, as high school students, this, you know, on one hand, it's a commercialization of public education, and yet I would also argue that we already have a lot of that in the schools, and it's brought in by the kids themselves. But I'm interested in your opinion. Could you go first and tell me what you think? And reset the timer, they're not on my time. My time's done, I want them to have more time than what I have.
Well, I agree with what you guys believe and how, that you guys should have a policy on making, like, limiting what should be advertised, but I was looking at the products of like the tables or the ads that would be put up, like Nike or Adidas. And going to high school, we're all walking billboards already, we're already wearing the Nike shoes, already wearing the Adidas. We see what people are wearing and, you know, like, what their favorite foods are to eat, like Burger King or McDonald's. But, you know, when you advertise like Nike and Adidas or whatever there is to advertise, being a high school student, I don't even have money for the product. And my parents pay for my education, they don't pay for, like, things that I need, but more so of what I want. And I've learned that you don't need to have certain things advertised for you, and it's all just propaganda and things that, you know, you could have, but you don't really need.
So how do you feel about actually advertising, though? Do you think it would affect you, or do you think you should?
It's like, when you go on websites, like, when you guys were talking about the ads, I asked Vince, I was like, "Do you really pay attention to ads, like, on the websites?" And you're just like, "No, because you're on the website because you're looking for something else. It doesn't matter what's on the side or what's at the top. You're there on the website because of what you need, not because of what you want to see."
So you'd be willing to take their money, even though you don't think it's effective? You didn't know this would be a pop quiz, did you?
No. Okay. All right. How much for public policy? I think it's kind of a dangerous territory, like, I don't know, because really, anything, it's always got, like, something opposed to it, like, if you do, like, a news company and say it's right or left, or it's, nothing's really balanced, and I don't know if it's a good idea, honestly.
Vincent Joy, have you had, have you done work in any of your classes, which is about analyzing media and the messages that are coming at you? Is that something that's been part of anything that you've had in school?
Like how to critique ads, that type of thing?
Critical thinking.
Oh, yeah.
Well, actually, yesterday in my AP Language class, we looked at the Ethos water bottle ad about how they're trying to, like, save money for Africa or donate. But we looked at the fine print, and it said that, okay, the Ethos water bottle is $2 at Starbucks. They only give $0.05 to Africa. So, and their goal was like $10 million, like, dollars to Africa. So we learned, and we did the math, we calculated, that you need like 200 million people to purchase Ethos water bottle in order to reach their goal. And so technically, Ethos doesn't really have Ethos at all.
I'm proud of you guys.
And we, on their ad, they have, you know, Matt Damon on the, like, background helping, you know, like, little, like, African boys and stuff, and it's you know, like, little, like, African boys and stuff. And it's just like, "Oh, you know, Matt Damon, he's saving the world." And then you look at the fine print, it's really, really small, that no one really tends to look at. And then you realize, like, oh, they're trying to get you to buy their product, not really to help save other people.
So I, you know, I, I support the idea of, you know, Bernie, you guys working on a policy and bringing it back to us. But I think a critical part of that policy is this question of screening. And I think a critical part of the screening is that we involve students who have had some level of work that they've been doing in school, you know, exactly the kind of analysis that Joy has been talking about, being part of that. You know, my leaning in a policy is that we got to keep it away from the younger kids.
Yeah.
And then if it comes into, into, into the high school at any level, again, that it's, it's taken through the kind of analysis that, you know, that Joy just took us through.
Yeah, and I think the ASB councils are a great resource to that. And I believe, Vincent, you're head of that this, this year. And we could take something to your group to have them look at and bring that back to the board. And I appreciate this discussion. This is exactly what we were looking for as staff, is to hear from the board your thoughts about moving forward with this. And we felt it was our responsibility to put it before you so that you could think about these opportunities. And having a policy is something we can easily put together and bring back to you quickly, because I would like to keep you thinking about this, keep us moving. And we'll do, we'll put something together, working with, with our schools and with our students with some input. And I'll bring something back to you in the near future.
Right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks. All right, we will move on to item FO6, Forward Discussion and Action on the Process and Timeline for the Selection of the New Superintendent of the School District. So this is something that I've put forward. I think it's very important that whether we do it tonight or we do it very, very soon, we've got to define our process and our timeline for going about the selection of the, of the permanent superintendent. We've had great discussions, I think, over the past several months as a board, but we now have to define what our process is and move forward with that. As I've thought about the process, I think that the, I've had two, I guess, models in my head. One is frankly, the process that we've now put into, into place when we're selecting a principal at a school. And the process has been basically that the district goes out and listens to parents, listens to teachers about what are the qualities that we're looking for in a principal. Some screening is done that brings, that then identifies finalists. And those finalists go out to a committee of parents and teachers at a school who make a selection. And I think that, that process of selecting a principal has been very effective over the, over the past year. I also think about the process that the city of Los Angeles just went through in selecting a new police chief. So that process involved a citizens' commission, a police commission that, that screened candidates, identified three finalists who were made public. And there was a chance for a real public vetting of those three finalists. And then the final appointment was made by, made by the mayor. I think that type of process is what I believe is appropriate for, you know, for, for our, our moving forward in the selection of a permanent superintendent. The permanent super, the superintendent of our school district is one of the most important public officials in our city. And I believe that there needs to be quite a lot of public input into the process of selecting who that person is going to be. So I don't need to go through in detail what I've laid out, but the, the process I'm proposing tonight to the board is that we would create a committee, a hiring committee. And I throw out, you know, for discussion's sake, a 15-member committee that each board member could appoint three members to. That with the committee in place, we would then go into a series of town hall forums, similar to what, what we just went through with the budget town hall forums, to get input that looks at, you know, the public's reaction to the, especially the midterm goals that we just took some action on this morning. So the public has a chance to say, to get a clear sense of the direction that the board is intending our district to go over the next few years and comment on that. And then also talk about the qualities that we're looking for in a superintendent. And that from that process then, and I would hope that if we did appoint a committee, that the committee members would be at those, the series of town hall forums. The committee would then get to work, start taking resumes and start to screen candidates based on who fits the qualities that are identified by the public in the town hall process. And the committee eventually would come with a recommendation of up to three finalists, who then would come out to the public, have a chance for the public to vet all three finalists with the board making the final decision. And I propose as a timeline that this process starts in the middle of March and that we, the board selects a permanent superintendent at its first meeting in July. So that's the proposal I'm putting on the table.
Comment on? Yeah, I think there are a lot of very good elements in this. Personally, I would like to kind of think about some of the details in terms of the structure of the, the committee and exactly, the exact timeline and exactly how it works. But I support the general idea. One of the things we don't want to do is to go out and hire some professional search firm to, you know, to do the work and make their own recommendation to us about who should be our superintendent. I think this needs to be very local San Diego process. The decision about who's the superintendent is certainly one of the most important, if not the most important decisions that the board makes. And so this is not outsourcing that decision in a sense of just turning it over to committee, but rather doing everything possible to get all kinds of input from the community, from staff, from an organized group, so that we can, we can make a very good decision. So I think one of the things that would have to be very clear is how the board would, you know, work very closely with this superintendent search committee in the, in the process of narrowing down to the three finalists. But I generally support the idea. I think that this is a good, a good framework. I would just, my suggestion is just for us to study this and look at any possible modifications someone might want to make to the process and, and make a final approval at the, the next official board meeting.
Yeah, you know, I, I, actually, this is not so completely dissimilar from, from what we have done in the past, to be honest with you. We did hire, you know, a search firm to go out. And, but we have had committees and we've, you know, gone out and had town hall meetings and gathered data and brought it back.
You've had a lot of experience doing this.
Yeah, unfortunately, way too much experience doing this. It, I really, I don't have any, any objection to this. My only concern, as I've said before, is the number of candidates. We have seen superintendents who had the temerity to put their, you know, hat in the ring for particular jobs, really be castigated in their own communities. And we've had principals. You know, if, if anybody finds out that a principal is looking for another job somewhere, you know, you know, we've had people's entire careers taken apart. Or it's, that's the only concern, is the number of candidates that we're going to get. But I believe that the board is committed to that process. So I'm not going to stand in the way of, of a bulldozer on this. With the exception of that one, I think that, you know, I'm willing to do that. I like the fact that we're going to have three, each of us identifies, you know, three individuals, which, you know, we did during the Cohen search and we did during the Greer search, actually. A little bit different iteration, but essentially we did have committees and groups that gathered together and talked about what they wanted. But they didn't go through and screen, I have to admit, the, the resumes. And that is, are they going to have, what kind of support are they going to have for doing that? And also making sure that it doesn't get into one person's hand and, you know, people willy-nilly, you know. I mean, I'd like some integrity to the process, which is, when you have an outside person come in and do that, they don't have a commitment quite so much either direction, although sometimes they do to the individuals involved.
Right. So what I would be, what I would recommend is if, if the board approves as, you know, this, this idea as a concept, that we would ask Mr. Reinsen to come back with us with a plan for how the staff would implement it. And I do think that we would have to look to Mr. Reinsen at a minimum and potentially HR to, to staff the committee and to staff the work.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. DeBeck.
Then I'm of approval.
Well, we've got a motion for approval.
Well, that would be a move approval, so.
There's a lot of holes in this. But let's take the example of just the simplest. So in March, between March 15th and April 30th, they had town hall forums in which they find out that they want a good guy to be, or gal, to be the superintendent. And they identify what the quality would be. Somebody knows something about education, somebody who has experience running a large organization. You know, I could go through a few more. So then we get that. And now we got, now we got a list of the qualities of a successful superintendent. I have seen a lot of these in my day. And, and, yeah. And so then, that ends in April. And then the superintendent search committee screens resumes. But there's no place here for anybody, a deadline for applications or an announcement sent out, that there needs to be an application and a deadline for applying. That's a missing ingredient. And then there's another missing ingredient between, in a 45-day period between May 1st and June 15th, a group of volunteers of 40, I guess, how many was it now? Five times, 15 people are going to have to come up with three that meet the criteria, but they haven't any equipment to judge the qualifications of the people other than the resumes. So they can't send out and find out whether these guys are lying or not. They've got a piece of paper to look at. And so one of the things that happens in, I'll call it traditional, this is not, traditional searches, is that that work that I just described, qualifying the qualifications of the people and vetting their experience that they claimed and their background.
Isn't that why we'd have HR staff this, though?
HR staff doesn't do that. They've got other things to do. I don't see that in the HR staff, there's a list of a people that are qualified to judge superintendents. But if you want to hire them, go ahead. But the point of it is, that's why you hire consultants, okay? So, so then, let's, let's assume that that works, that somehow we get through all that and we now got a group of qualified applicants, say 50. We had 50 the last time. And I assume that most of them were qualified. Then we have these 15 people, got to pick out three. They're not going to do that face to face. They're just going to do it on a paper screening. Well, where's the, where's their interviews?
I'm, yeah.
Okay. So, but in a 15-day, so, so in this period, they're going to have to get them to come here, get an okay for us to pay for them to come here. Or are you assuming that they're just going to come on their own? Okay? And then they're going to, after you get to fif, these five, down to, I mean, down to three, they're now going to say, "Okay, stand up in front of the community and you're going to be introduced." Is it how they look, or what they say, or how they answer the introduction, or what is it that the community does after they're introduced to determine whether or not they're going to give you and me advice as to who we should hire? If it's a beauty contest, then have them send pictures, you know? But if it's a substantial case where the community has a forum and asks them questions and gets into, "What do you think about special ed? What do you think about the OSL program?" And they don't know what they're talking about when they answer it, then maybe that's something that, but see, that's what I'm getting at. The process is missing all that.
Yeah.
And so I don't want to put timelines in. I want to see a detailed description of a process that has substance. Then I might approve this. I can't approve it like it stands because I don't think it's got the substance that I need. After this is all over, the four, five of us, probably three of us, will decide who they want for superintendent based on a process that didn't reveal that much. Because there's no place in here where you say that the board interviews each of the finalists and makes a judgment about whether they had anything to say that was substantial or not. I happen to have been involved in all the selections for the last 20 years. And I can say that every single time, the board interviewed the candidates themselves, face to face. And while the, some of the processes of screening out candidates were imperfect, and I could say more than one, it was at least better than relying on 15 people who have no experience doing this at all. So there's a lot of holes in this. The biggest hole is probably, once you get three and you introduce them to the community, dah. You know, it's, what's it going to be? Who, how do they look? No, I don't think so. Well, I'm not happy with this. I could say, it looks to me like it's missing a lot of critical ingredients that we'll end up regretting that we, that we left out.
I think that the purpose for tonight, and this was not an action item, it was informational item.
No, it's action.
It's an action item.
It's an action item.
Okay, was exactly that, to identify the particular holes that may be in it. I don't mind the 15-member search committee. But I do agree with Mr. DeBeck that the board has to interview, the board has a responsibility to interview them before just selecting them because the committee recommends them. There, there are some things that, because they have to work with the board. And if, and certainly, going through this process a few times myself, I, I think it is important that we, we ask some, some critical questions. Now, the thought may be, well, we've gone through a process before and that process, we, you know, we pick people that didn't stay or left or, or whatever. And no process is totally perfect. But I do think that the people elected us not to just approve things in the end, but to be involved along the process some way. So, I mean, I can support, and, and so if I read this correctly, what it is tonight, we're, we're going to agree that we will have this 15-member panel. We're going to, and we're going to request people that are interested submit their com, their information to the board. And then, but it has to be, if each of us picks three, then they have to identify what district they're coming from. Now, and so that board could, and that 15-member board, if people pick just three people, if I pick my three, you pick, you know, and et cetera, does that board have people on it that would represent other stakeholders? Okay? We may pick parents. I'm sure we have some parents on it. But will it have people that represent, you know, people that work for us? Will it have people that represent our business constituents? That type of thing. And how do we, you know, en, ensure that? And that piece is kind of, kind of not there.
Yeah.
So while I'm not opposed to us, as I agree, you know, we certainly agree that we have to get this started.
Yeah.
We have to also make sure that we're able to ensure that the search committee is a balanced committee that is balanced in many ways, not just, you know, that we all have three members, but, but that we have the right people on that committee. If not, then we will be setting ourselves up for failure.
So I think, I just, I want to agree with Dr. Evans. What I put out was a framework. There's nothing that I heard that is inconsistent, I think, with the way that I've been thinking about this. And I would suggest that each of us has a responsibility now, between now and the next board meeting, to come with our suggestions to fill in the blanks. And, and at the meeting, I guess, two weeks from today.
Right, two weeks from today, February 9th.
February 9th, so, yeah, whenever that is. The February 9th board meeting, that we consider everybody's ideas to fill in the blanks in the framework and that then we, we approve a process and move it forward.
I have a suggestion along those lines, which was what you were saying in terms of Mr. Reinsen's involvement at the beginning. First of all, I think it's good that we're having, this is, this discussion is just an example of how we're not going about things the regular way, in terms of just saying, "We're going to get a search committee and, and do things." And so we're really struggling with doing this, this very well. And I think, as in some other things that we've done, what we've been able to do is have a preliminary discussion and then direct some information to a a preliminary discussion and then direct some information to a staff member. In this case, it would be Mr. Reinerson. And bringing up what Mr. DeBeck has brought up, and Ms. Jackson, and everyone has brought up in terms of what might be some holes or missing ingredients, or concern, whether it's concerns about the composition of the committee, or what the role would be. I think another concern I would have would be in terms of the, you know, the board involvement. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't want some good candidate to be out there that was, you know, just kind of skipped over and never really came to the board's attention. So there needs to be some cooperation all along the way between the committee, you know, and the board, to make sure that we come up with a, with a good decision. And then just the logistics of, of the screening, you know, with the 15-member committee, is that we have some, some professional staff that is helping to organize the information, even if they're not making decisions, and so forth. But that, that's what I would suggest that we do, is that, that not just to come back in two weeks and discuss it, but that we could all present our ideas individually to Mr. Reinerson, and he could kind of come up with a general idea.
Can I just, before you speak, can I just maybe say something?
Yes. Yes.
Well, Mr., I, I think, and we do have funding set aside, even though the budget is tight, I am concerned at the amount of work we're having staff to do in a short period of time. And, and certainly, you know, I applaud what, you know, Mr. Reinerson does and other in HR department, who's working on a lot of other items. I think that this is a board responsibility. I think in the board's budget, we have allocations to, I hope we do, to, for our superintendent search, and that we may have to employ someone who's, who is either assisting Mr. Reinerson or that's their job to do. I really get concerned when we keep piling things on people, because we just said, come up with a policy for our revenue generation for media, and there's other things going on with the budget, and we just keep adding and adding and adding. And then the frustration comes in when we ask for something and it's not done. So I, I think for something as critical as this, we need to be willing to, to look and say, okay, we have an idea of how we want to do it, let's find, you know, the, the person that can augment his staff, that can do all this gathering, do all this calling, do all this organizing, because I am concerned about the amount of work that we keep adding on to the staff here. When you just mentioned, we lost a thousand people. So the staff here is already stretched, and we keep stretching them a little bit more, and something's bound to break, and we can't, can't be broken here.
Although, I would suggest that, I think, Mr. Reinerson, and Mr. Reinerson, correct me if I'm wrong, in your mind's eye, you've probably been keeping a placeholder for this particular event.
Well, thank you, Ms. Jackson. I appreciate that. And staff is doing an awful lot in these difficult times. What I like about this approach is that I see a combination of things that we bring together in the community outreach. And the superintendent search is really combined with budget outreach and your long-term and midterm goals. And, and we had already anticipated an ongoing community outreach programs. I think our communications department staff did an excellent job in supporting this board between October and December in the budget outreach that we did leading up to the priority based budgeting. That's the kind of program I think that we can build upon. And if, I, I would agree with you, if we were going to do this separate from everything else that we're doing, it would just be another task. But I really see this integrating it into our community outreach with what the board is trying to, to do, to engage the community in your goals, and in feedback on the budget and the superintendent search, it's, it's all one and the same kind of community engagement. I have talked to Sandra Hueso, your chief HR officer, about putting some more detail to this. And what I'd suggest is you let Sandra and myself do some thinking about this and take this outline that President Barrera has put together, and bring you back our staff thoughts with the superintendent's input about some more detail about how we might go about this, what kind of workload it would mean, and how we'd integrate it with some of the other things that we're already doing.
And I, I would just like to pitch in that I think HR does know how to screen resumes. I'm pretty sure that's a job skill there. It's required, yeah.
So we'll bring you back some more details with that, and then look for some more feedback from the board.
But you know what? See, that just triggered something. We know that HR knows how to screen resumes. That's for staff. But we're telling HR to screen the resume of the person that's going to be leading this district. I, I have a problem with that, okay? Because what, what, what you're saying is, you're screening your, your, your potential boss's resumes, okay? Now, no offense to anyone, okay, I know how controversial I can be sometimes. My name isn't in that little happy pile if I was outside of this district and they say, oh my God, no way. Because, I mean, I, I've seen this when we were screening for principals, and principals get left off, or their, their name goes into the pile, but their name doesn't make it the cut because someone screened them out for whatever reason. The 15-member committee, community committee may be the one that's actually screening. Now, that I'm okay with, but I'm not going to be okay if it is staff screening.
Well, I meant to, when I say screening, I'm talking about organizing for criminal background checks, you know, for confirming people's, you know, whether their credentials are accurate. I'm not talking about HR making decisions with regard to that, but letting people know.
We had, I don't remember which iteration, which superintendent iteration it was, but we had consulting firms come to us and present us with ideas like this, okay? And they, they put a number on this. They didn't, they didn't say, for example, this is something you can do yourself. You know, they said, we'll do this for you. You know, they, and they, they set up, some of them said prices, and some of them said, you know, there's a lot of controversy in this idea of having a whole bunch of people stand up in front of the community and say they want to be a superintendent, because, and this is, they, they were, these people were, by the way, being interviewed by the board in closed session about whether or not they were going to work for us, okay? So that was a part of the superintendent search process. Some of them pointed out the, the mistakes that people make are to think they can do it all themselves. This is a very similar example, is do it yourself selection of superintendents. There, the idea that you can screen and find out things that we found out about some of the candidates that were up at that time that were excluded, which, by the way, we lead a hard as assistants to the soup. Well, a perfect example of why you shouldn't go through this, except you're responsible to make the decision yourself. You know? And so, you, you know, I'm uncomfortable with, with this, I'll call it open process, because I don't think it's going to result in what we want. And I think we basically are, if you went out to look, talk to those people who do this work and said, this is our plan, tell us how you'd implement it, some of them would say, we don't want to implement it, because we've done this before and we don't think it'll work. If they're straight, they would. But there are some people that say, you give me a faulty plan and I'll do it for you for any price it's on, because I can keep employed. But the question is, is that going to work either? I don't think, I don't want to, I don't think that this process is the kind of process that would be recommended anywhere in the nation as a way to find the best superintendents around, because the best superintendents are not unemployed. And what will result in this is, everybody that wants to be a superintendent will apply, and some of those that have got jobs won't. And they're the very people you probably want to talk to. You know, I know Sheila feels that, sometimes I felt like we were railroaded into the choices by the search firm, because they had clients that they sort of favored. That might be true. But I have yet to see any of those, and you were in on some of these until with Catherine, some of those people that we didn't, didn't make the cut, after we talked to them face to face, were pretty darn good people. But this process won't ever show them up. They will never show. They will never show. And we're going to end up with, I'll call it, pickings of the best of the worst.
I, I'd like to make a motion, which, my motion is to accept the general concept, the plan laid out here, to turn it over to Mr. Reinerson, and then in the meantime, between now and next meeting, Mr. Reinerson would communicate with staff, but also with, could get input from individual board members and come up with a proposal at the next meeting. So we have kind of a structure to work off, and then we could do a more formal decision at that time. That's my motion.
And we've got a second?
Second.
Any further discussion of the motion?
Let me just make another comment. And certainly, we do have to get our timeline moving. I do not doubt that at all. Mr. DeBeck just commented, nobody likes being railroaded. Okay? And the only people that are going to, you know, come up and, and go into community forums are people that feel comfortable doing that. And it might not be the best person to be the superintendent for our district. Maybe somebody that's flashy, maybe somebody that knows, has, has good, good PR skills. And we got a good PR person, so we don't need to have a superintendent with good PR skills. We need someone who can move our district. So I, I think that we, we do have to fill in the gaps here very, very carefully. I don't, I mean, I get railroaded, railroaded last time. I don't want to be railroaded this time. No offense, Mr. Kober, because I kind of feel this kind of sets him up, because people know him, he goes out and speaks, and he gets to stay in, in place. And the problem that I have with that is that when we first started this process, what we said was we would put in an interim that would give us time to find the right person. And, and we put an interim that we initially said would not be eligible. Now, everyone is saying, be eligible. Everyone is now saying superintendent, interim superintendent. And to me, that is, I'm being railroaded, because what would happen is, everybody would come back, and, and maybe the two people that come up beside Mr. Kober, people say, we don't know you, but we, we don't know them, but we know you. So we're going to vote for what we know. And, and that is not the best way to pick a superintendent. That is my concern, I'm just putting my concern out there now. May not be what is planned, or what is working, you know, what happens in the end, but that is my fear of what, what this does as well.
Okay.
Okay, real simply. This is a, this is a perfect example of a board deciding, and no better than the rest of the country. I'm done.
Okay, well, I'm not done. If we want to look to the rest of the country for a model of putting a superintendent in a large urban school system, yeah, we need a different model. The, the, the practice that we've seen in this school district, and the practice that we've seen all over this country, is a revolving door of people who are jumping from job to job, whose commitment is to their career, and not to the people of San Diego, and not to the kids of this district. So yeah, we do need a different, a different process and a different system. I do have a lot of faith in our community as being able to come together, look at people, ask the right questions, bring the right concerns back to the board. I have faith in this board after listening to the community, to, to be able to, in the end, make the right decision. But yeah, I, I think, I think relying on consultants, whose job it is to get contracts from school boards for advice on how to run a system of selecting a superintendent, has failed this district repeatedly, will fail this district again, and I can't buy into that. This is a framework that I'm laying out. If we've got holes in this framework, fill them. But I think we need to move forward with this process. This is a democratic process. I think it's the right process for this school district, and so I'm going to support the motion.
Mr. Barrera, if I may, you know, there is, as you go through anything, you know, always an opportunity to modify the plan. If we don't get the types of applications that we need, and I respectfully remind the two members that are objecting here, that they were both people who didn't want any superintendent at all to speak of. You know, so I don't know about how radical this is compared to that. But that, you know, we can modify this process as we go along, if we don't get the types of applications that we want. And I don't think it is a slam dunk that any person or particular type of person will get the nomination for this. And, you know, I, I expect this to have, you know, a process that has integrity, that we are on a real search, that we are on a real mission, and we are trying to find answers here. But again, we can always, once the resumes come in and we can take a look at them, you know, we can, we can always modify this. But for the time being, I think this has got, it's an interesting proposal, and, you know, I think Mr. Barrera has put an awful lot of time into it. And, you know, I, you know, it's a lot of thought, and I think there are very, very few holes in this proposal, to be honest with you. And I think we've captured, no, very few holes. And I think we've captured a lot of them, but we've got a little bit of time. My concern is that we've already spent an inordinate amount of time without, you know, a permanent superintendent in place. And I'm concerned about delaying this until March 9th. I've already got the three people I want on my committee to put on there, and, you know, waiting until, I mean, excuse me, February 9th, thank you. I want to get this started. And if we have to modify it as we go along, that's all right. But I, you know, I'm grateful that we're at least launching this, and I'm grateful to Mr. Reinerson, you know, for, for being willing to take this on in addition to everything else.
I'd just like to point out that with the timeline that Mr. Barrera laid out in this proposal, even by working on it until February 9th, we still could follow this timeline, we said.
No, we can, but it's just you have to contact the people, and then they have to make contacts, and then they, it doesn't give them much time to think about it. They have less time to think about whether or not they really want to participate.
Okay.
You know?
Because the question is, what is the time commitment? I mean, I mean, I've read this, and so when I ask people, my three people, the question is, what is the actual time commitment that they're going to have to, you know, give to this process?
And that's a lot of the structure that we're going to have to look to Mr. Reinerson for, so that we have a clear idea of what people are going to be doing.
Okay.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
Yeah. Waiting on you.
Okay, great. So we will, it passes, yeah. So we will look to Mr. Reinerson to come back to us with something for February 9th. Okay, item FO7, discussion of the audit and finance committee membership. Mr. DeBeck.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's pretty clear that, I mean, I know I'm getting older, and I know the other, the committee is also getting older, and I know they're also been on it for a while. So it seems to me appropriate that we consider a way to add to the committee and make it more, maybe a, a committee that self-generates new experts. And while I don't think, because it's, right now, there's two community, or three community members, the chair, which, who has, you know, a major political office, and two others that are laypeople that are in their, in the finance business. I'd like to see that those people either recruit or find others to work with them and expand the size of the committee in a way that gives it, a way to generate a continuity, because it's, it's pretty clear, sooner or later, they're going to burn out or give up. And, and I don't like a committee that starts from scratch all over again. I think it's a good idea to have, you know, ongoing members and rotations of people that have been there before and, and kind of know the charge. So I'm not going to get into the politics of who gets selected. I'd certainly like that committee, that committee to self-generate some, some recommendations. I've been out talking to people about what they'd be interested in serving in. Most of them shake their head and say, what do they do? And it says budget and finance, and as soon as they see here the finance, they say, I don't want any part of it. And if they hear budget, they're even worse off.
Well, it says audit and finance.
Well, yeah, audit. Audit is a different ballgame. And if it meets like twice a year, three times a year, you might get a few more people. But even then, they're only, they're not doing the audit. So, you know, you, you know, I think we maybe ought to examine the charge for that committee, or the name of it, in order to find out whether it's really viable. viable anymore. Because audit and finance implies something different than audit. And I think that I could find some auditors or people that were expert CPAs that knew how to look at audits. But I don't know if I can find people that are willing to serve on a committee with the name finance, especially for this school district.
Okay, is there a motion?
Well, no, I just, I just moved that we expand the committee and that we ask the committee or others in the community that are willing to serve on a committee that we've identified more clearly the functions of to do it. I think it's ridiculous to have a committee that's, has potential of disappearing.
Are you suggesting perhaps seven members instead of five?
Well, I'd say ask them how to expand their committee.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
The chair of the committee is right back there. Wait over in the corner.
Is the, is the motion to ask the Audit and Finance Committee?
Ask the committee to how they would, how would they replenish their, their, themselves and sustain their operation and clarify it so that everybody that is a potential new member understands the charge that committee has.
I'll second the motion so that we can hear some comments.
I'd love to hear from him.
Okay.
Yeah, I would too.
Mr. McAllister?
His dad was a heck of a teacher, by the way.
Thank you. Come from a long line of teachers and educators in San Diego. First of all, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, I'm the Board of Education. I'm thankful that you brought this issue up. I think it's a good issue for discussion. I wanted to say just a few things. First of all, that since your board established the Audit and Finance Committee, the committee has performed the duties that were given to it with a regular meeting schedule and structure that was laid out by the charter that you established for this committee. And I think that as the chair of the committee, I don't really look at myself as a major political figure, by the way. I just try to do my job for the people.
You got elected, you got to be a major political figure.
And I work for the taxpayers, as all of us do, on a regular basis here. And in spite of the fact I collect taxes, I still have a major finance position, I think, in this community. And that was one of the reasons that I was nominated and agreed to serve on this committee. I don't think like any of us were chartered for a lifetime appointment. There's no question about that. And I think turnover is a healthy thing in all committees, in all boards, in all commissions. There's nothing wrong with that. It's a good thing. Right now, this committee continues to serve. And I think there was sort of a semi-formal survey of committee members recently when you reappointed us to serve on that committee to ask whether there was still interest on the part of each of the three community members to continue serving. I think we all answered in the affirmative. And while we recognize that it's your prerogative to name more people to a commission or a board or a committee like this, I'm not sure that adding more people necessarily gets you a different outcome or a different mission for that committee. So I think that, you know, you have to look at what the charter of the committee is and what the expectations are of the committee when you make appointments to that committee. And to make sure that they dovetail with what your expectations are. I'm, you know, the first to say, I serve at your pleasure. You appointed me and you affirmed me, I think twice, to serve on your committee. I don't speak necessarily for any of the other committee members. I did have a conversation with Mr. Wright earlier this afternoon, and he more or less affirmed what I am saying to you tonight, that we serve at your pleasure. And it is your committee to do with what you want. I should point out, though, that the essence of this committee came about in the wake of tremendous pressure in the public arena as a result of some of the major financial lapses that this country has seen over the last 10 years, starting with Enron and looking at any number of others that are prime examples, WorldCom, et cetera. Those bad experiences forced new standards and new best practices onto the public stage so that public boards and commissions were encouraged by their outside public auditors to establish independent audit and finance committees to look over the work of auditors that were hired by the entities in the first place. Remember, the firm that I will not mention, who audited for Enron, had given it a clean bill of health the year before it collapsed. So there was suggestion that it was maybe a good idea to have an independent body look over the work of the auditors as they proceeded through their year of auditing each year of their contract. And then when a final audit opinion was rendered by those auditors, as is always requested and deliverable to you here, that audit committee would then look over the findings, the recommendations, and then bring them to you. And I think the track record of our committee has been stellar. We have presented things to you, and I think the audit team has found things. We have elicited and found things on our own by public involvement in the processes because all of our meetings are open to the public. They're covered just like you are under the Brown Act. And so I applaud the effort to look at this. I think it's a good thing. You know, I'm the first one to say that if it is your desire for someone else to assume the role that I have held for the last few years, I'm happy to step aside. But I think we're doing a very good job. And I think that the combination, by the way, of community involvement with two members of your board on each of the teams, i.e. the Audit and Finance Committee team of five, is a pretty healthy number. And I think it's not out of sync with a lot of other public bodies who have appointed similar committees to look over their respective audits.
I see a question. Mr. McAllister, could you just remind me on the, the terms of office or appointment, is there, is there a staggering, I can't remember, of the positions in terms of?
I'm not sure exactly of the, I think they are staggering. Yeah, they are.
So for example, the two board members are not, don't have the same term, right?
I think all of us have had, no, they, they don't.
Did one of you replace?
Right, someone went in for one year and then one of us went in for two years.
Did you replace me? Who replaced?
Okay.
I don't have it right.
Right. And so then each of the community members, they do not, their term does not end all, they do not all end simultaneously.
That's correct. We started at the same time, but one member was given a shorter term than the other two, and I think they went on that way.
Right. I just was just saying that because when Mr. DeBeck was bringing up about the issue of a few people and someone leaving and the committee falling apart, it sounds like there's a pretty orderly way that if one person leaves, that they're replaced and then there's a continuation.
Well, I applaud the effort to do.
That's a good logic. Excuse me. That's good logic. But the problem is that there is a learning curve if you get on the committee. And I can remember the committee not fully understanding its charge when I was there at the beginning. I mean, I was there. And there was a time where they, they've worked that out. So now the three that are non-board members have a pretty clear picture of how they work. And I'm not criticizing their work. Absolutely marvelous work they're doing, and it's at no pay and a considerable benefit to the district. But when you have a re-up like we do, sooner or later, one of them is going to say, I'm gone.
Right.
Well, it's, for me, I'd rather have, I'd rather have them bring in a few more people so that there was this continuity. Now, if, if, I'm hearing the chair, he seems to think it's satisfactory. I'm not going to micromanage his affairs. I think that's, if he believes it's working, it's working. And I'm not going to go into that arena. But my, my concern was that, that we just roll these people over again and over again. And effectively, though they have term limits, they don't. And so there's going to be a time that when Mr. McAllister decides he's had enough or not, and, or one of the others that I've got to know and like a lot will say, well, wait a minute, I've got other commitments. I don't think I need to do this. And we're going to be looking around for a replacement. Would it be better if that person had some experience on the committee already? I think so. And so I don't want the committee down to two for a period of time. I'd rather have it larger for a while and then to have it shorthanded for a while. That's that. I'm done. I don't, you know, it's, for me, it's like, do you get continuity or don't you? If you don't, then let's suffer through it. That's okay. But I, but I had to raise the issue. I couldn't just ignore it.
I think, just in summary, and by the way, Mr. DeBeck, no criticism is taken. I appreciate you.
No, it's good work.
But I, I think, in my opinion, anyway, the number of members works, the charter and the charge works. And the committee, we know, annually devotes the appropriate time commitment called for by the charter of the committee, or from the board of the committee, or for the board, for the committee, from the board. How about that?
It's late.
It's late, yeah.
But regardless, I do think that it's a good issue and it's a good question to raise. And I'd be the first to say, if you think we ought to bring some understudies in or extra people, by all means, we could look for new volunteers to come and be there. But I think right now, it works. And I think right now, the commitment is there. And if one of us decides that at some point, he or she wishes to move on, there's a provision for that in the charter of it.
One at a time.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister. Thanks for coming by. Ms. Nakamura, did you?
Yeah, I just, all of us have had a chance. It's been a really wonderful sort of training ground, I think, for board members. And all of us have had a chance to work on, on this committee and have seen that rotation. And I do remember how long it took us, you know, when we first organized it to kind of get our arms around what it was that we were asking this group to do. But they have served the, you know, the district just remarkably well. And I don't, I don't see any reason to upset that or change it. When someone decides that they're going to step down, we'll, we'll, we'll take that on. And I assume the two other board members or, or staff, or however it happens to be, will, you know, will, will assist in that training. But in the meantime, the three of you are not allowed to fly on the same plane at the same time.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Worr, could you repeat back Mr. DeBeck's motion?
You know what, I'd withdraw.
You withdraw with the motion? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McAllister.
And thank you very much for your service. We really appreciate it.
Okay, now let's move on to, I think, something very important. We've got our Project Schools Making a Difference. And this is just a very, right.
Could you take a, could Matt?
No.
I guess not.
They've waited long enough.
They have, indeed.
So it is, this, I think, is the most exciting part of our agenda tonight. I'm glad we got to it after two and three quarters hours. Mr. Kober, if you could start us off.
Thank you, President Barrera. I do think this is the highlight of the evening. It's a very positive story. And it's an academic story. And we've spent a lot of time not talking academics, which are at the core of our, core of our focus. And what I'd like to do is ask Grenita and David Lorden to provide for the conversation. Some time ago, we decided that we needed to focus on what was working in this district. So David and principals, campus staff, central office leadership, started to gather the information. And we truly have a handful of success stories here. And I'd like David to lead you through that conversation.
Good evening, President Barrera and board members. It's a pleasure to be here. And I had the, I would say, the fortune of being asked to kind of lead this project. And from my understanding, this was uncharted territory to begin to look at our very own schools. So I think there's a PowerPoint that should be coming up.
Our point person is returning to her seat.
Okay.
There we go.
So we do have, before I begin, I just want to acknowledge all of the folks that are here with this project. If you would just stand so we, we can acknowledge you. We have team leaders, principals, staff. This is exciting. We may have lost a couple who are going to present, so I will fill in in that case. But we, I'm going to start with this quote. And what's in red here kind of really stands out for, for us, that we know that American education is filled with instances in which students with similar backgrounds and traits achieve very different results. And it was kind of with that, that this idea came last September. We saw some significant gains in our schools. And we know that some schools are, the kids are just achieving. And it's just exciting. We want to learn what they have done. So the study was really started to look at students in, in high poverty schools and how they're achieving. And instead of finding isolated pockets of excellence, we've said, we've seen, there are some schools here that are really soaring. And let's see what they're doing. There was some criteria for selecting the schools. And I'm going to invite Ron Rodey to come up and talk a little bit about the criteria and the data that we used to come up with these schools.
Good evening. We took a very objective look at the data. We looked at several different indicators ranked of schools. And so we started going down each of our indicators, looking for which schools showed up on multiple instances across those indicators. And so we looked at API, we looked at AYP, we looked at some subgroup data, and then came up with a list of schools that rose to the top across those different indicators. So one we looked at was API. And we also had to keep in mind, we had limited resources to go and study these schools. So we had to set some thresholds once we came to the data. So a number of other schools made considerable growth are not showing up on this slide. But for example, when we went down the list, we had some others like Angier, Valencia Park, Marshall Elementary, La Jolla Elementary, and Adams, for example, that also made really strong gains in API growth. But because of the thresholds we set, with the resources we had to visit schools, they did not show up here. Also wanted to let you know that when we looked at all the elementary schools across the state last year, the average gain was 16 API points.
Wow.
If we look at all the middle schools, the average gain was 12 API points. And at high school, it was nine API points. And so you can see with our top schools here gaining 92 points, that's truly remarkable growth in one year. We also took a look at the AYP data and again, looking at the percentage improvement. So the light blue is the 2008 result. And then adding on the 2009 increase to get to the overall percentage proficient in English Language Arts. And again, we can see particularly at elementary schools, there was really strong growth here. And as we know, middle schools have had challenges over the years. And so when we see these gains beginning to show up, it's, it's very encouraging at the middle level as well. Then just for your information, also looking at mathematics. And here you can see there's more dramatic gain than we saw with English Language Arts, where we see all of our schools across almost all of the grade level groupings having increased. And particularly at the, some of the secondary schools, those are really, really strong improvements that we have not been accustomed to seeing in the past few years.
Thank you. So basically, to perhaps answer the question of really what is Project Schools Making a Difference, and it really was a way to deepen our understanding of some of the practices and principles that were applied in these schools to see such growth. We decided to, after coming up with our criteria, develop teams that would go out and visit the school. We decided to do a three-member team with a team leader and to visit the nine different schools. NCUST is the National Center for Urban School Transformation. It's an organization run out of San Diego State University. And so I contacted the director and said, I understand that you guys, you know, do this. And could you let us perhaps borrow some of your criteria and your interview protocols and observation? And so we were able to do that. So I wanted to acknowledge their support in doing this. So as a result of this, we came up with four major areas. So, as a result of this, we came up with four major areas to examine. The first one had to do with the instructional program, looking at curriculum, assessment, accountability, and the instruction. We also wanted to look at the school's culture, learning environment, any kind of special school improvement efforts that were applied at the school, and then the school's organizational structure. We decided to do kind of a twofold approach. One, get into classrooms and observe using an observation sheet that was very specific in looking for the percentage of certain elements in the instruction. We also decided to conduct meetings/interviews with different stakeholder groups. So, the school principals set up meetings with the parent groups, teacher groups, administrators, students, and other support staff. So, we really wanted to get in there and ask a lot of tough questions. So, as a result of this, we learned, you know, we found some great things. This slide just talks about some key terms that will help. But through the findings in the instructional program, the way that I've broken down this PowerPoint is, I'm going to give you a slide for each one of the four areas that seem to be commonalities in the schools that we visited. And so, the instructional program, we really saw some strong adherence to these K through eight units of study. We really saw an emphasis with special education students being fully included, which has really been a push in our district. We saw consistent delivery of grade-level instruction. We saw use of common assessments that seemed to be frequent. And not only did they give the benchmark and other types of assessment, but they really seemed to use the assessments to, okay, what do we need to do differently? What's not working? What do we need to revamp? Most of the schools had common planning time and systematic ELD intervention. And we really saw some schools that really seemed to understand RTI, response to intervention, and it became a part of their school's culture and what they did to help support kids. The school culture, every school, highly visible administration. Everyone was able to talk about this as the principals, the administrators, they know our name. A commitment, there seemed to be a commitment. Everyone was committed to the task. They understood the purpose. There was unity of purpose. There was trust in it, and they all held high expectations for students. I thought this was kind of interesting, that all the staff supported the teacher in learning and was recognized for doing so. And so often, that recognition seems to be missed, but it was very, very evident. Staff was very positive, supportive, and encouraging. And the environments, they were structured. They were neat. They were orderly. And there was just a spirit of collegiality, collaboration, inclusiveness in the community. Through the school improvement efforts, we really kind of saw a few things stand out. And that, again, ways to celebrate student success. They seemed to go above and beyond to recognize kids, call them out, in really tangible ways of celebrating them. Lot of instances where this gradual release of responsibility, where students were taking ownership for their work, was intentional. Again, the frequent assessments and use of the data director. People spoke so highly about data director and assessments as informing instruction. ILTs, instructional leadership teams. I know they, last year, every school had one, and this made such a big difference. And then, the PBIS was huge. And this is, we saw this at most of the schools, PBIS. Then, through the school's organizational structure, and here we were looking for governance, leadership, purpose, and resources. And we saw strong, visionary, consistent, and highly visible leadership. Teams, lot of teamwork, whether it be the ILT team, the PLC, departments meeting this team. But we saw a lot of teams with specific tasks, and they were working as a team. Great collaboration there. And then, a creative use of limited resources. I mean, it was interesting to sit here tonight and talk about all the budget and shrinking budgets. But these schools seemed to really be creative in how we are going to use the limited resources coming their way. We then decided, for this presentation, to try to narrow down each of the schools, what was unique about the school into one slide. And I brought for you just the information, but this is a report from each school. And some of the reports are, you know, 15 pages. And so, there's a lot of information to try to synthesize into one slide. But the principals were great in allowing me to do that, because we could go on and on. So, in order to get through these slides, I did ask the team leaders... Bernie's here. I did ask the team leaders to come and just talk about the slides. Some had to leave, so Mitzi, you're here? Great.
Thank you. And first, I'd like to introduce Amanda Hammond-Williams, school principal. And I know that you are teaching staff, students, and parents in the audience, and thank you. It was a great day to visit their school. And really, in one slide, it's hard to capture what we saw when we were at Bernie Elementary School that day with our team. I went with Barbara Barron and Kate Neal. And we, again, you know, interviewed and talked to students, went in classrooms. And what we saw was an incredible focus on curriculum instruction through the IB program. The relevant curriculum, the authentic opportunities for kids to do real learning and learn about their world, created a sense of engagement, just the inquiry model there. So, the students were really involved and engaged in their own learning. We see them here sometimes, and they're picking up, they're recycling. It also, the IB curriculum pushed on the collaborative planning time. So, teachers had to get together and take our curriculum and match it to the IB curriculum and plan together. So, that was very strong. The content instruction was also really strong. Science, social studies, along with the reading, writing, and mathematics instruction. But above and beyond all that, they had art, language, music, and PE instruction. They called them specials. Again, this is the first year, I think, of full inclusion for the special ed students. But we felt very strong, again, with the collaboration between the education specialists and the classroom teachers to support students in the general ed setting. The families spoke so highly of the teachers, the principal, and about the culture and climate of the school. They just felt welcome. They felt part of the decision-making process. They felt a part of the school invited, and that there was an open-door policy. This is their third year in the Magnet Schools, the Magnet School Assistant Grant. And they have, the climate there on the school, kids are problem solvers. And we believe a lot of what we see there is a result of the PBIS work that the staff, students, and teachers have done. So, again, a big round of applause for the Bernie Bees.
It's so great to see the students. And I think I've just lost this. Ah, there you go. Okay, for the next school, we went to Edison Elementary. Welcome. And Carla Loria was the team leader, and she couldn't be here this evening, so I'm going to talk a little bit about what we saw there. What we saw, or what the team saw, that really seemed to stand out, kind of, was this daily ELD instruction, where students were grouped by proficiency levels. And then, data. Data was very transparent, and we talked about it. It's not, they're not afraid to show the data and let the kids and the parents own the data in order to say, "Hey, this is where I'm at. This is where I need to get going or get to." And so, very transparent use of data. This consistent school-wide instruction, we talked about. But what else came out was a strong sense of community, and teachers visiting other teachers and not afraid to get into classrooms and learn from each other and say, "Hey, I've got, I'm working on this. What do you think? And come see me teach." And finally, daily exit slips. And this was, an exit slip is something that they use to say, "Okay, did we get it? We intended to teach this and ask the kids." So, the teachers have immediate data to say, "Okay, this worked or this didn't work." So, Edison Elementary, congratulations. And then, I had the opportunity to be the team leader for Garfield. And again, at Garfield, it was so exciting to see what they were doing. But this daily ELD instruction, again, where students were grouped by proficiency levels, really seemed to tackle some issues. What really stood out was their strong RTI program. A few years back, they just really started through their instructional leadership teams, coming up with an RTI program, where students actually would be deployed to other classrooms and other teachers to get some interventions or support. Teachers really worked together there as a team, and again, strong commitment to the benchmarks. It was really exciting, because we got to talk with the present principal and the former principal, because he still volunteers, and I believe he's even in the audience, so... There you are. Okay, our next school is Joyner. And Jean Madden was, is the team leader, and she is here to talk about...
Good evening. I was on a team with Ruby Boyd and Clarissa Mondahar, and we had the wonderful opportunity to be at Joyner. And we have Gilbert Gutierrez from the school. I know he's anxious to get home to his young triplets waiting for him. But what we saw there was loud and clear, the ownership of every single staff member believing in the students and the parents and all joining together. Everyone took responsibility for every student walking on that campus. The teachers have a one-and-a-half days per month planning, so they come together in collaboratives, and they have ed specialists and support teachers that come in to work with the groups. But that was consistent. And they talked about that time going and looking at student work, analyzing it, revisiting what's working, what's not, and then using that time to plan for the next weeks of instruction. The piece that they kept talking about was that every teacher at that school is considered an expert, so I don't have to just go to my grade-level colleague. I can go to anyone on the campus and ask questions and get feedback about my instruction, and that everyone's committed to be a lifelong learner. And they preached that, and they demonstrated that each and every day. When you walked into classrooms, there was just a real clear sense of organization. You saw consistency across the grade levels, so that there was common charting and instruction going on across that. The really strong emphasis on vocabulary that was embedded into the teaching lessons. And then, it was also reflected in the charting and in the graphic organizers and the student work. And then, a strong focus on comprehension. So, everything that they did got at the theme and the big idea and the understanding, along with multiple scaffolds. The classrooms was full of different kinds of charting, and you could see it progress. So, that went from heavily supported to less supported, to where the students were then taking the notes on their own and putting it into their own work. And that built as the year progressed. And then, a key piece that parents brought up, if they were a parent of a student that fell into the basic or below-basic range, they came to a meeting, and they sat down, and they were taught ways to support their children at home. So, that was the expectation. If your child is struggling, come in, and we're going to show you how to help, and here's how to develop some tools to take home. What was, I think, the most fabulous piece was the students. We interviewed groups of students, third, fourth, fifth graders, and they came to us with such incredible, just command, like adults, talking about with confidence and with direction. And when we kept probing it, you know, how did they get this way? Because they're talking to us like you would an adult. They said it was a micro-society, that that allowed them, in the afternoons, they worked in their communities, and they started their businesses. And they spent the first part of the year studying what it was like to be a business owner or to work in a service organization. They had to interview for their jobs, first graders that were conducting job interviews and then being hired, and they were the mail delivery service for the campus. They marketed their stamps and their post office, all these different things. But they ran that. They came up with the jobs. They had to decide when a company was closing. They had to pull in their legal counsel to determine whether or not this person got continued pay. I mean, it was very complex. But they learned that. And they, you know, they go in to interview, so they better sell themselves, and that came out. So, it was a wonderful experience, and Joyner is a great place to visit if you haven't
Okay, now, moving to our middle schools. Correa Middle School, and Jeff Olivera was the team leader for that school, and he is here to speak.
Good evening. Is anybody here from Correa? Have you seen?
They're home, doing their homework.
It's middle school.
I guess it's a word. I think one of the common denominators that you hear is that these schools have a sense of positive momentum. And the momentum that starts with small victories, it leads into giant victories. And Correa is certainly that case. Correa's API went up 55 points since last year. The year before, it went up 33 points. So, it's just not a one-year phenomenon. There's something positive generating itself at the school. A lot of that has to do with their relentless sense of purpose that all students are going to be able to learn. You know, in meeting with the staff, parents, students, and all the stakeholders, it was very evident that they all reciprocate their enthusiasm towards one another. I mean, teachers talked about the great kids they have. The kids talked about what wonderful teachers they have, and as well as the support of the administration, and in particular, their principal, Patricia Ladd. They are, the staff sense that they believe that their principal's behind them, that basically has their back. And people are willing to take risk, because they have a confidence in the leadership around them. It's a well-run school. It's well-maintained. They're supplying differentiated instruction for all extremes of students that need support, whether that be special education or gate students, assignments, or real world. They've had consistency at their staff. They haven't had the large turnover that we sometimes find in our more challenging schools. They have a consistent staff. They know each other. They know who to rely on when difficult challenges present themselves. I think also what you're finding in this is the use of common collaboration time. You know, to get better, you got to spend some time with one another through the coaching model. And they do that at Correa through the professional learning communities. They also share common preps with each other. And last, certainly, is how they use their resources. The Point Loma Cluster Group is very much embedded with technology, and Correa is a large part of that piece. Great job on Correa's part.
Thank you, Jeff. And our next middle school is Lewis Middle School. Nellie Meyer was the team leader, and she is here to present her findings.
Thank you. Lewis Middle School is led by Brad Callahan, and I believe Lewis is also home doing their homework? Anyone from Lewis? No? Okay. I'd like to, first of all, introduce our wonderful team. We had Brenda Campbell, who's here, and Mary Waldron. And Brenda is from the federal office, and Mary Waldron is from the Office of Language Acquisition. And first of all, when we went to Lewis, what we saw was a collaborative environment that was extremely well-organized. And this organization was noted by one of our team members, that this really occurred from the leadership on all levels of the campus. The teacher leaders work there in professional learning communities, and they really get together to share best practices, share common lessons that they're using, and they really have common time that they can get together and do this. The teachers, when we spoke to them, talked about the release of responsibility model. So, their goal is not to be the only expert inside the classroom, but they really professed that you had to let the students discover and use inquiry on their own in order to get at the heart of the concept. They also have a strong engineering program, which is relatively new at Lewis Middle. And the engineering program feeds to Patrick Henry High School, and then later, they have an agreement with SDSU. And so, there's a very clear path for students, so they know where they're going. And when we talked to them, they were very aware of the possibilities. When we went from classroom to classroom, we saw particularly in some departments, a strong alignment. So, you could tell that the teachers talked together, and you could see the evidence of that very, very readily. And then, we had the good fortune of speaking to students who were within their avid... And then we had the good fortune of speaking to students who were within their avid program, and they were very articulate, very strong, and really professed all sorts of different things. We had musicians, we had athletes, we had, all of them were scholars, however, and they were aware of that as being very important. And then lastly, one of the programs that they have at Lewis is an innovative ability to, they mentor within the campus, so every staff member, and once again, it really hit home when David mentioned, that every staff member is recognized and expected to be a part of the team. That was extremely evident and professed by the principal. But they mentor every student within the campus, and we also had a volunteer, a retired vice principal who came back as well, who was a part of the campus and a part of the family environment. So all in all, Lewis, we saw very well-organized, very collaborative, very, very student-centered environment, and as a result, we saw great progress. So, great job, Lewis.[659.12][659.12](APPLAUSE).
The next middle school visited was Marston Middle School, and Linda Golkey was the team leader, and she is here to talk about Marston.
Thank you and good evening. I'd like to first acknowledge Betsy Cook, the principal at Marston Middle School.[681.12][681.12](APPLAUSE). What you see on this list is a combination of programs and things that involve people, and I think it's the interconnectedness of those things at Marston Middle School that make it really click. First of all, for the programs, you'll notice avid is up there, as well as striving readers, and an intervention and exploration advisory program that's unique to Marston. You may have seen some pictures of their rocket program for their exploration that has been on our website. And along with that, the school-wide note-taking is a part and parcel of every student's daily activity at Marston Middle. So when you look beyond that, you see the interconnectedness of the people and what they've done at Marston Middle School, the leadership in particular, and how that's led into the creation of some of these wonderful programs that they have. And that leadership not only comes from a fantastic principal, a wonderful, high-functioning ILT team, great parents, great students, but I think there's something to be said too for the longevity there and the sustainable leadership among those folks as they work together to do what is the most important thing on the list, the laser-light focus on continuous improvement. Not so much test scores, but just how are we improving and looking at that on a frequent basis. So the bottom line for Marston is this, when you step back and look at the kids, there's an incredible belief in self and a feeling that they belong to a real community. Thanks, Marston.[769.56][769.56](APPLAUSE).
Okay, and our last middle school visited, Roosevelt International Baccalaureate Middle School, and Shirley Wilson is here.[782.43][782.43](APPLAUSE). Shirley was the team leader, and is going to speak on the school.
Good evening. I had the wonderful opportunity to discover the great practices at Roosevelt Middle School International Baccalaureate Magnet Program. Serving with me on the study team were two highly qualified staff, Dr. Kim Messer and Anna Biffle. When we first entered Roosevelt Middle School, the office staff received us warmly, and that's a credit to their school culture. During our visit, we observed high-quality, standard-based instruction with the infusion of technology. The students we met shared their excitement about learning, the setting of their goals, and their many clubs during their prime time. They express the deep support of the Roosevelt staff. The staff clearly articulated how they work as a team to plan and to support student learning and achievement. The classes are small due to the QIE funding. Parents express their satisfaction with the academic programs, the responsiveness of the staff's support, and the opportunities for parent involvement at Roosevelt Middle School IB Magnet. International Baccalaureate is a worldwide organization, according to its mission statement, aims to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. At Roosevelt IB Magnet, there have been outstanding gains in academic performance and a dramatic improvement in student attitudes, resulting in a 70% decrease with behavior referrals. I would like to introduce the principal, Dr. Carmen Garcia, and she'll present staff who are here, and possibly a student.[915.62][915.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Shirley. I very proudly stand before you, representing our amazing teachers, administrators, staff, parents, and students of Roosevelt IB Magnet. Our entire Roosevelt team has worked steadfastly to support the needs of all of our students, both academically and behaviorally. We hold high expectations in terms of dress, behavior, and academics, and our hard work is paying off. We celebrate our accomplishments and strive to continue to strengthen our school on all ends. I'd like to recognize our administrators, our parent academic liaison, our teachers, and our parents and students who are here today, if they could please stand up.[961.12][961.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. As some of you might know, our school is the oldest middle school in our district, and Roosevelt was once upon a time a beacon in the community, and I'm happy to announce that we are once again returning to that glory. And parents and students are happily returning to us. We aim to prepare students to receive a well-rounded education, and all of our students take eight core subjects. And our students embody the IB learner profile, and these are characteristics that will certainly prepare students for the 21st century and beyond, and these are the characteristics in the IB learner profile. Our students are inquires, they're knowledgeable thinkers, communicators, principled, open-minded, caring, risk-takers, balanced and reflective. At our school, we do offer very small class sizes, 21 to 1, 6th and 7th grade, and 26 to 1 at 8th grade, and by next year, we'll have 21 students per each class. Our students wear uniforms, I am wearing one of the uniforms, and we also have team, a team configuration embedded throughout our entire organization. So, to sum everything up, at Roosevelt, we offer something for everybody, academics and also extracurricular activities for our prime-time program, so on and so forth. So we love our school, and we will continue to work to strengthen our school. Thank you.[1049.33][1049.33](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. And Madison High School was the high school that we visited, and Richard Nash is the principal. I don't know if Richard is still here or not. I don't think, is anybody from Madison here? Okay, studying. So Kate Neal was the team leader, but she did have to leave, and so I'm going to fill in. And what we, the team, really learned about Madison that stood out was writing across the curriculum. Strong emphasis on writing and the co-teaching model. They are also recipients of the Striving Readers Grant, and they, the team found that that really seemed to make a difference. They do have an advisory period that really seems to focus on developing a college-going culture for the students. And the teacher, really, the teachers kind of operate in teams, whether it be resource teachers leading different committees, designing benchmarks and rubrics, and analyzing student work. And finally, their athletic program, they feel, really seem to make a difference because a lot of their coaches are actually teachers at the school, and we know, coming from the high school role, when you can have your teachers and coaches the same, it makes a huge difference. So Madison, congratulations. And before we go to the actual certificates that the board members are going to give to the principals, I'm going to kind of synthesize the common threads that seem to stick out. And as I read these, you'll say, yeah, you talked about that. So again, starting at the top, strong principal leadership and support. Not only great leadership, but a very supportive principle of students, staff, and parents. Focused and frequent collaboration seem to make a huge difference. Consistency of rules, expectations, and instruction, and all of those are characterized by high expectations. Strong and effective organizational structures, whether it be the ILTs, the PLCs, the master schedules, how they make decisions, and all kind of focuses on reciprocal accountability. Number six, tight, consistent, and fair student management. Can't say enough about that, and I think PBIS has really made a huge difference in that. Number seven, high visibility of staff that is positive, supportive, and encouraging. Being visible, not just the principal, but the teachers in the hallway, at games, at events, goes a long way. And again, the use of their assessment data via data director, data director, I'm sorry, and then the strong sense, people own the school. So that sums up the common threads, and I'd like to really kind of call out-
David, before you, go back to that slide for a minute. I think just one more moment of reflection on this slide for the board and the community. This should be exported, not just this page, but all the pages that make up this presentation to all of the schools in our district, obviously, because it's the model, whether you're in an elementary school or in a high school. The other point I'd like to make on this one, this set of common threads, you can interchange certain words, you could start with the board and work your way down to every organization, in the central office, out in the deployed business centers, as well as the schools. This is a successful organization framework that we should all be aware of and reflect on. Go on to the next slide.
I appreciate saying that.[1285.83][1285.83](APPLAUSE). And I also want to say too, is we know that we have many schools in our district that are working this way, and strong leadership, and it was really tough to say, we're only going to go visit nine schools. That was probably the toughest part, but hopefully next year, there'll be more if we continue with this, because it's very exciting work. But I do want to call out a special thanks to the visiting team members who gave up a lot of time, not just, not just the day of the visit, but planning and meeting and preparing and getting team members together, and then the folks who helped plan the entire program. I just want to call out a special thank you to those folks as well. And now what I'd like to do is invite our principals or principal representative up to receive a certificate. I know that your board member has a certificate to give to you, so if you want to make your way up, we can all just come up here at once.[1346.72][1346.72](APPLAUSE). And why don't we just start with Alice Bernie? And we'll just go through them.[1363.83][1363.83](APPLAUSE). In fact, you have, you want to just do all yours at once?
Sure.
Okay.
Amanda, amazing job.
Thank you.[1377.98][1377.98](APPLAUSE).
It's legendary, the work that you've been doing at your school and the progress that you made over the last year. Congratulations.
Thank you.[1398.12][1398.12](APPLAUSE).
It's pretty much my favorite school in this district. Thanks so much for your work. Thanks so much for incredible leadership over the last year at staying at the school and helping that transition. Same, I've just heard such great things about you.
Thank you.
Yeah.[1438.12][1438.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, and-
I'll make my own comments.
That's the school, so we don't have the other schools here.
Except for me.
Oh, there you are, Betsy. I just thought he did them all here.
I'm an alumni at Madison. Does that count?[1460.22][1460.22](LAUGHING).
Betsy Cook at Marston, so thank you.[1464.65][1464.65](APPLAUSE). And what I'll do is I'll deliver the other certificates to the principals-
Actually, I'm having breakfast with Brad tomorrow, so I'll deliver it.
Pardon me?
I'm having breakfast with Mr. Callahan tomorrow, so I'll deliver it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other ones I can deliver?
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you. Let's do a round of board comments, Ms. Jackson.
I'll wait to hear that.
You want to wait to hear this?
Yeah, I just, how long, if you said it, forgive me, it's always late, how long was this process? How long, over what period of time?
We started, yeah, we started at the beginning of September, and today ends it.
Very nice, it's very nice, really, you know, I know it's been said in the past, we don't do enough to celebrate and to share, you know, data among schools and best practices. I think this is a fabulous step in that direction, and I'd like to see more of this, not less. It's just really, I know it was a lot of work, but, you know, it's very meaningful for me as a board member to see this, and I think there was more meaningful discussion about instruction and what makes a school great, and yet each school was unique. So, you know, I really appreciate this. You're, Mr. Colby, you're absolutely right, this was a great part of the evening, so.
Yes, I remember we, I believe last summer, had a board meeting, or at some point, or maybe early in the year, very beginning, when we were talking about the improved test scores in a lot of the schools, and we were kind of putting out the question, why? And a couple of people, kind of off the top of their head, speculated about some things that happened recently, about why it might be, but it wasn't, it wasn't very convincing, because anybody can kind of say this or that is what did it. And I'm very impressed that you went and visited the schools and really assessed what was going on, and really tried to find these common threads. I mean, this is so valuable, to not just celebrate the success and say, adieu, to the schools that are doing well, but to say, these are the common elements, the things that we see in the schools that are doing well, which is such a great model for all of the, all of the other schools. I really appreciate it.
Turn to the back.
Well, it's really great to actually go out and look at schools that are doing well. But I'd rather have the people that are not doing well visit the schools than you guys. So I hope the next step is that we encourage schools that have challenges to get out and get to these places and see what's going on, because that's where we really need to get the message across. It sounds hard to do some of these things, but it's not as hard as it, as it sounds when you go out and see how they built it into their culture. Instead of just mandating it from the top, they basically have figured out it works for them, and they're the best salespeople we could have for change. So I hope that the schools that aren't on this list get a chance to go see these schools. We don't have really built that in much, and maybe the first step is to get a couple of principals to leave their schools and go look at another school. Maybe the other way is to bring a team of people from the schools that are not doing well to these places and let them spend some time. I mean, frankly, I know we got a research problem, but I feel like it'd be far better to provide some substitutes to get people out to see something that's working within the district than to have them listen to a whole bunch of lectures from people who aren't even working with kids.
I agree.
Right. And that is part of the plan, to disseminate this information to our different principals and vice principals and let them know what we found.
And certainly, I applaud everyone in the work, and certainly, looking at our local schools is very important, and one of the things has been said before is that we always look outside our district rather than in our district. So I'm glad that the staff took the time to look inside our district. And my comment now is to the staff, actually. When Mr. Rhodey started, he mentioned there were other schools that met the criteria, but we only had the resources to visit nine. I'm disappointed because none of District E schools are recognized. Now, you used the information from Dr. Johnson's interview protocol, and I know that last year, the annual, at the annual conference, one of our schools received an award. So the community feels like people outside the district recognize their efforts, and the efforts aren't recognized in the district, okay? And that's by staff, that's by you folks, okay? And I'm extremely disappointed, because I've been on this board for five years, and 80% of the time, when I say, give me a list of schools that are involved in items, there's either one or no schools in District E. So it gives the impression that the staff constantly overlooks District E or don't care for District E. That's where most of our students are housed. Tonight is a very sad night for District E with the other items on this agenda. And I am, you know, certainly, we are doing some wonderful things throughout this district, but what the staff said tonight to that district was that you aren't doing anything wonderful. anything wonderful, because we're going to send this out to all the schools to tell them what to look at, but, but even though you have schools that met this criteria, we didn't want to include it, okay? And, and no offense, Richard, I mean, you got four or five of Richard's schools, maybe four, I don't know how many, but you couldn't even put one, you didn't have the resources to say, rather than having, you know, four here. That's what I think staff has to look at, a balance of how you're putting information out, that is critical. Not taking it away from the schools, but I'm saying, that is part of leadership, and leadership makes sure that everything is balanced when it leaves this district.
I absolutely will take that back.
Thank you. I know you're aware of my concerns, I just want to make sure that the public is aware of the concerns as well, because they're going to ask me, and I should ask you now, what do I say to those people when they ask me, why were now schools included?
And perhaps I could respond to that by saying that the, before we even began to look at the, the schools, we, we set the criteria, for example, and I'll just use the 50% free and reduced lunch, we said, okay, they have to have at least 50% free and reduced lunch.
But you, I'm going to cut you off, but Mr. Rhodey stood up here, and he said that after we set the criteria, we had this list of schools, and he named some others, La Jolla, Marshall, Valencia, that all met the criteria, but because of, he said, because we didn't have enough resources, we only selected nine.
I, I need to clarify that, his comment, if that's okay right now.
Please.
And I'm going to use the example, I'll go back to the free and reduced lunch. We set the criteria first, and then, and then said, how many schools are we going to come down that we can do? And it ended at the ninth school there. And then, at the criteria, the other ones were very close, but they weren't up in that. So it wasn't a point of saying, no, we're not going to pulling schools from District E, and I, but, but I think next time we need to definitely, hopefully, we do this again, and to make sure that we are getting representation from every district.
My other comment was that this is great, and it should be earlier in the agenda. I think that if we're going to do this as an annual presentation, it should be early enough that families can come and participate in, because it is a wonderful thing to do.
Absolutely, and I'll take this back.
I thank Ms. Jackson for, for both of those points, they're very important. And David, I, thank you. This is, this has been the absolute best moment for me since I've been on the school board, and, and I just, I so much believe in approach, in an approach that we search out what's working. And I think Ms. Jackson's point is very important, because, you know, these nine schools that we focused on tonight have done great, exceptional work, but there are many, many schools in our district, you know, that continue to do exceptional work. I mean, I, I remember, we looked at a chart of all the schools that are even 90% and above free and reduced lunch, and almost all of them, over the course of the last five years, have gained cumulatively at least 50 API points. I mean, we've got so much success, you know, that's going on throughout our, throughout our school district, and it really is a testament to, to public education and what's possible. And I absolutely also believe that it's a challenge, and I, I agree with Mr. DeBeck, that it's a challenge to the notion that the way you turn around schools is, you know, driven by people who are never with kids. I mean, these are, you know, exceptional strategies that, the work that you, that you've done and the team's done to pull together the common elements is so important, but also understanding the unique characteristics, you know, of each school. We've got an amazing system in, in this, in this city of kids coming together and having an opportunity to really go somewhere in their life, and it's just an amazing celebration of what our public system is about, public education is about. And again, I thank everybody for being here, and I thank everybody at all the schools in our district for the work that they're doing every, every day.
And I've been, since September, I've been taking notes and, and lessons learned, and how we can just make this even more effective, and, and so we will continue to make modifications and address the concerns that have been raised, and, and so we can get it better.
Doctor-
I just wanted to just emphasize what Mr. DeBeck said about the importance of people visiting the schools that are doing very well, because I believe, even though I said we need to pull out the common threads and so forth, and you could present those slides to all the schools that are not performing very well, and I don't think it would make much difference at all, because those words are very similar to other words we see about what is important in schools. What will make the difference psychologically is, is the enthusiasm, for example, that we saw in the team members who went out to these schools and were excited by what they saw. I mean, they were there, and they saw, and they were transmitting that to us, and I think that's what's going to make the difference in the district. For people to go and visit these schools and be infected by this, this contagious enthusiasm, that's, that's going to make all the difference in the world. So I think that, that next step is crucial, that there's a lot more interchange, and that we really change a lot, which we've talked about a lot, our professional development from, you know, outside experts coming in and talking, and just letting teachers work with each other and find out what's working. That's, makes a huge difference.
I like that, because it really puts us in the role of researchers, researching what's, what's happening, and I think that's a great role to be in.
Yeah, I just, I also though, want to emphasize that, that, you know, I agree that we should have more cross-pollination, and people need to be talking with each other, and setting that example, but, you know, as we were speaking up here, there's an old, there's a Chinese saying that, that I learned on the way, when I was visiting China last year, and that was that you should not be a frog at the bottom of a well, meaning that it's important to go out and see other practices, you shouldn't be a frog at the bottom of a well, listening only to your own voice. It's important to go out and see other, you know, best practices. I know that many of the people, the, the principals that, you know, I've seen come up here have been, are the product of some part of the professional development that we've had ongoing within this district, and have grown because of that, you know, and it's, it's, we wouldn't, if we, if we were only looking within our own, you know, school district, we wouldn't have the International Baccalaureate Program, we wouldn't have the Engineering Program that we've got at Lewis, you know, Cornell Notes didn't originate in this district. I think it's important that we do both, that we, you know, continue to, to ask, what is the rest of the world doing? What are the opportunities for our students and their growth? And yet also celebrate and, and grow those programs that are doing well here, but I don't want it to pass by that, as though we should, you know, we should be so provincial that we, we failed in our professional responsibilities to look beyond our own borders.
Thank you, David. Thanks again. Thanks to all the schools.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we take a break?
No, do you want to even one item? What's the power for this?
Okay, on to item GO4, approval of the expenditure of 2010-11 Title I AARA funds, yet again. Superintendent Kova.
Move approval.
Second discussion, let's vote.
Hold on a minute, I have a question. Is this maintained, is this in any way changing the, the level of funding for Title I schools at all? What happened to that vote? Because we do that every year, that annual vote.
Yes, but that hasn't come yet.
My spanking hasn't come yet, Catherine.
I know, because if it did, you and I would be in different clothes.
That's why it's so quiet.
Okay.
That's done, so we all vote?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, let's move on to item H, preliminary proposals for allocation of facilities for charter schools under Proposition 39. Superintendent Kova.
I move the staff recommendation.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
My second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation. Okay, we've got two public comments that I'd like to call up. We've got Lisa Berlanga and Danielle Strackman.
Thank you, President Barrera, board members, Superintendent Kova, Lisa Berlanga, California Charter Schools Association. As a little side note, I just wanted to remind everybody that with the advent of Proposition 39, came the school bond passage down to 55% rather than 2/3. So that's kind of how that all started, and really provided benefit for districts. So I know this is a big process every year, but there were some major benefits for everyone. With that said, I also want to say thanks again for the multi-year agreements that made this process much easier for not only your staff, but for the charter schools. We're only looking at, I believe at six offers on the table right now. So that has decreased work for all. I also want to thank your staff for their timeliness. San Diego Unified is following the prop timelines perfectly. The association has had to send out letters to other districts as general reminders to follow the guidelines, and that was certainly not necessary. Communication has been great, the process has been much better than it has in past years, or continues to get better every year, actually. We do have a few concerns about the current offers that are on the table. If you look at page 91 in your attachments, you can see on there that some of the offers are rather scattered. So this was the offer for KIP, and classrooms are scattered all across the campus. And so when charter schools look at this, and probably even man looks at this map, it would cause some concern. We would hope that offers that would, would attempt to put classrooms together, and would attempt to be a little more contiguous on a site. I, I have no idea how this is to work with bell schedules and students being completely mixed, and those kinds of things. Same goes with the offer for Innovations. If you look at the two maps, classrooms are scheduled, they're all over the place. And then with Health Sciences, there was more of an attempt to put classrooms together and cluster, but all of the common areas haven't been thought out, because there's only one here in blue. So we understand that these are preliminary offers, and what we're asking is that staff just be directed to really negotiate and work with the charter schools and the schools that are sharing space, to come up with something that's going to be workable for all, because there is some work that we feel that needs to happen with these preliminary offers. So, thank you.
Danielle Strackman.
Good evening, President Barrera, board members, and Superintendent Kova. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Innovations Academy. My name is Danielle Strackman, and I am one of the co-directors and co-founders of our school. Back in May of 2008, the board unanimously approved us to open our charter, and for that, we are very thankful. I've come today seeking your support and help, because though we are appreciative of the diligence that the instructional facilities planning department has shown towards getting our proposal to us, we find the site offered to us, Emerson Bandini, unacceptable. To list a few points. One, we currently have 20 additional in-district students that are not accounted for in the proposal, and our waitlist for the next year is predominantly for more San Diego Unified School District students. So we would need more space than is currently being offered. Two, for our students who take public transit, this move would take over two bus transfers for these students making it an hour each way. And lastly, and I think most importantly, it has been shown through the site-specific bond project that Emerson Bandini is an unsafe environment. The report reflects that this site must remove or minimize risks of any potentially hazardous material throughout the facility. Furthermore, replacement of many heating, ventilation, wiring, plumbing, and electrical upgrades are needed. From the cluster meeting, a request has been made for a complete reconstruction of the school. This is clearly an unsuitable site for the children of San Diego. When looking into our options further, as we'd like to work on a solution together, we found that many district school facilities are leased long-term to private schools, such as what was Hale Junior High in Claremont, or used for administration, storage facilities, or professional development, such as the Fremont-Saino Town. My understanding is that in most cases, these buildings could not be offered to charters as comparable facilities per Proposition 39, since the, since they did not receive facilities upgrades during the Prop MM work in the 90s. One solution that we see today is that charter schools can use funds to modernize district facilities from the California, ooh, excuse me, from, hmm, from the California School Building Fund and the Charter School Facilities Program. We would love to use those resources towards a district facility that we could call home. Thank you for your continued support of charter schools, as we have the shared responsibility of meeting the needs of all of San Diego's children. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to actually amend the, amend the, the motion, given that it sounds like Innovations can't accept the offer to Emerson Bandini, I'd amend the motion to remove that offer from the table and direct staff to look for an alternative site for Innovations.
They have 30 days to-
I know, but, yeah, but I'd just assume remove the offer.
Could I just say that we have an obligation to make offers to the charter schools by February the 1st? So what we're asking the board to do is, to make these offers, we can then begin a discussion with the charter schools, see if, you know, work on their concerns, see if we can come back with a final offer, which may be different from this preliminary offer, but we do need to have the approval to at least make this offer and then begin the process that Ms. Strackman just talked about. So I, I would recommend maybe not taking that one off the table, but starting that, starting with that offer.
In fact, wouldn't that mean that if we withdrew the offer, that we wouldn't have been making an offer to them, and therefore we would be in violation of the rules?
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay, withdraw the amendment.
Okay.
I have it back. Thank you.
Be, okay.
All right, any discussion, Ms. Jackson?
Just want to make some comments before the vote, and so certainly, not that I am opposed to charters, I cannot agree with the recommendations. I feel that the recommendations do not suit our students at any of our schools. I, I think that the co-location the district has had for many years has, has not been successful, has not been successful. And I think that what, what is happening is that we see a co-location of schools with some of our schools that are really working hard to achieve. That takes the staff's time away from completing their mission, and, and so, and I can't accept any of these. And most of these, again, are in District E, and that's where people want to be. Lincoln is the only high school right now in this district that does not have a feeder, regular, public school. It is, no other board member can sit up here and, and, and say that all of their high schools have a feeder pattern. This, these assignments erode that even further for those schools in District E. Now, Bell will continue to struggle to, to feed into Morris, and Man will continue to struggle. Wilson, we just got Wilson, Wilson's been working hard, and they're just coming out of program improvement. And so now, the focus is not, is on how do we work out the space with this, with the school? When, when, when staff has to do other things, it takes them off of their primary mission. And, and I have a concern that many of these assignments will cause these principals, they have to spend time, you know, hours and hours of time, trying to figure out who sits where, when we use the auditorium, when we do our food services, and this is occurring at the schools, where the principal's focus really needs to be on their academic achievement. And, and so if, if it is that we, we take and, and we look at school sites that need to be repairing state facilities monies, then I say we do that, so that the principals at these sites can focus on their primary mission, which is educating children, not negotiating, you know, where we have to assign allocations, face allocations. But for that reason, I will not be supporting this recommendation at all.
I move to divide, divide this into two actions. One is the denying portion, and the other is approving. There's two items listed here, and I think the board needs to be unanimous on the ones they believe in, and not unanimous on the ones we have differences in. I suspect that Ms. Jackson may want to have her, her vote on item one recorded, so.
Is the document updated here?
Updated in terms of-
Yes, because, because the one that we saw earlier today, the silent one is in my board packet.
It should be the most up-to-date.
They deny the issuance of proposals to certain listed charters.
Number two is to approve.
And then the second one is to approve the list of-
The list, that's how they had Holly Drive going somewhere.
That must be an older version.
Exactly.
This is a correct one here, I don't know what you have.
The list says that-
So then, this item isn't right?
No, no, because the list today did not have Holly Drive. It did not have it located someplace.
The PDF is correct.
The PDF.
I believe.
Well, you know, maybe we ought to change board docs if we can't get it up to date, because you're right, what we read is what we expect to vote on.
The PDF is, what we submitted there is correct.
So what's here is-
Then I withdraw the motion. I mean, it's basically another vote. The chairman should have a vote.
Okay, why don't we withdraw the motion and clear the board? And let's go back to the list of schools that are being denied an offer.
There should be three.
Should be three. And what are the three, Roy?
The three are Holly Drive, Global Visions, and I should look at my, my number two.
Okay. Can we get a mo- Okay. Can we get a motion?
I move that we deny the facilities to those three just mentioned.
On the basis of their application being imperfect.
Correct.
And well, wait a minute, because when I met with you, you said that you were saving Innovations economic, and we said one of the problems that Holly Drive faced was economics as well. And so if we're going to save one charter because of economics, why would we save another one because of economics?
Innovations' application was a complete application. Holly Drive was an incomplete application, a deficient application.
Or facilities.
Yep.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to deny Holly Drive, Global Vision, and Magnolia.
Which are the three who had deficient applications?
Please vote. Okay. Now, a second motion is to approve the schools that are being offered space. Can we have a motion for that?
I shall move it.
I second.
Okay.
I'd just make a comment that I think we, there are been some very legitimate points brought up about co-location, and they've been brought up on the district side, and they've been brought up on the charter school side. We are under a deadline in terms of February 1st, in terms of making an offer with the facilities we have available. But I think even without having specific situations for the future yet, we need to really establish a policy and a guideline on how we really are going to work on these co-locations. I just want to say that, because my thing is I can support it for right now, but I think we really need to reassess that whole co-location issue.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, passes four one. Thank you, thank you, Ryan.
Was there number three to that?
No, that was it, right? There were two, two parts.
There's a third part of that that approves offering them opportunity for additional space at the annual rate of $2.75 per square foot on campuses.
Yeah, I'm a little approval.
Second.
Second, for the, for number three and four.
For number three and four.
Yeah. Okay. Four to one. Okay, let's move on to HO2 update on the 2010 budget and development of the 2010-11 budget.
President Barrera will quickly walk through, ask James to highlight some of the governor's proposed budget issues and impact on the district.
Good evening, members of the board, and President Barrera, and Superintendent Koba. It's James Macias, the Chief Financial Officer for the school district. I do want to give thanks to my team, but that's not my slide.
Go ahead and do it anyway.
Who's in charge of that? Here we go.
Thanks. Superintendent Koba asked me to provide a couple of slides for you to look at. These are some numbers, as you've seen already, as far as what the projected shortfall is for 2010-11. The good news is, at this point in time, there's no revenue limit change for 2010-10. We're pretty confident that that's not going to change based on everything we've received from the Department of Finance, from the governor's proposal, and also talking a lot with Monica up in Sacramento. So those are some of the items that they've done. The fourth bullet highlights how they've taken a reduction for local education agencies, including San Diego, and that's ongoing targeted cuts of $1.5 billion. If you recall, for the 2010-10 budget year, they took a reduction of $252.83 in our ADA. That was supposed to be a one-time reduction. Well, they made it a one-time reduction, but now what they've done is they've taken about a $201 ADA reduction based on the $1.5 billion cut that they've, that they've put through with the governor's proposal. The nebulous part for us is they have given no indication on how they are proposing local education, education agencies actually implement these cuts. They make reference to going back to 2007-08, that that's when they're looking at from a $1.5 billion standpoint. As you know, over the past several years, we have taken reductions in our, in our central office areas and in a lot of school district administrative costs. So I'm trying to find out from the Department of Finance how they plan to implement that. As soon as I know, I'll make sure members of the board know and our staff know as well. So the important piece is the 1.5, that equates to about $201. When we crunch the numbers, and I have to thank my staff for spending, as you know and you recognize, they've been spending a lot of long hours, and I appreciate the recognition that you, board members, give to them, because that is very meaningful for my staff to take away that you understand the work that they're doing. Bottom line is about $27.8 million, and we've categorized it in those areas. So the revenue limit that I talked about, the ongoing cut, COLA reduction, categorical reduction, and then also some CSR penalties that...
James, can I just confirm? The question last time was whether that negative COLA reduction was in fact a reduction as opposed to...
Yeah, from everything I know so far, they've confirmed that that's the case.
Okay.
And we're checking off with the County Office of Education as well. So from what they tell me at this point in time, it's a reduction actual, so subtract it out of your revenue limit. Just a quick slide to kind of give you an idea of 9-10, 10-11 first interim and what the 10-11 governor proposal entails. So it's really about 4,986 funded revenue limit. That's our base revenue limit. As you can see, they, from the 10-11 first interim, we thought it was going to be a little bit higher, but now that the governor's proposal's come through, we know it's not. And it's mainly due to those items that were on the previous page, including the $201 for the ADA reduction amount. The number that we've talked about in a couple instances is about 86 million negative. That's the shortfall that we're projecting based on what we had previously, and now the additional reductions based on the governor's proposal. So we've shown this slide on a few occasions, and what we're seeing is that in order to balance 10-11, that's going to be about $86.8 million. As we've talked about in detail, outside of the economic uncertainty reserve balance that we're required to have, not using those dollars, I have about $11.3 million. We are working hard to check to see if the 1.6 million is panning out. And after my meeting with you in closed session, my staff and I put a plan behind how we're going to make sure that we know the exact number for the 11.3 and also the spending fee savings of $10 million. As you know, when you add those numbers up, that's about $25 million. So our goal, and we're working really hard to try to ensure, is that by the time we get to the end of the year, on top of our economic uncertainty balance, we're going to have $25 million that we can put to the $86 million problem. When I net those numbers out, that means that projected deficit for 10-11 incorporating the governor's proposal is about $61.6 million, and that's offset because of the $25 million. Like I said earlier, why do you have a plan that my staff and I are working on that will engage the SIOs, will engage the cabinet members, and also school principals to say, here's what we have to do, and here's how we're going to do it? As you know, I always talk about a three-year plan financially. The state requires us to present current year financials in two out-years, they call it the multi-year projections. If we were to balance 10-11 and 11-12, and you did it all on 10-11, that equates to about $113 million, okay? So same thing, we do, I give the math for you there. The 25 netted out of the 113, that still leaves a shortfall of about $88.3 million. So the previous slide showed 86 million, and we just balanced 10-11. But when I balance the out-year, 11-12, that's only, not only, but it's $113.5 million with a shortfall of 88. State budget assumptions, unknown impacts, so here's some things that we're trying to Unknown impacts of the MOE, so the state's going to apply for a waiver. Don't really know what that's going to do to us down the road. It's not going to impact us this year, and probably not next year, will probably be the year following. They have as part of their solution package $6.9 billion that they're going to the federal government to say, because we give you so much from a tax base, we think you should give us back federal revenues, about $6.9 billion. That's in the governor's plan, and that's what's helping balance the budget. So that's a little bit, that's a soft number from my perspective, but they haven't talked about how that might affect local education agencies if the number doesn't pan out. The other thing that I thought was interesting at School Services of California Conference is that the previous budget solutions are not coming in as planned, so what I'm trying to do with my team is to find out which ones aren't coming in and by what dollar amounts they're not coming in at. From an operational perspective, if you look at the lower part, we're down now, we're less than 1,200 pars, and let me just check.
Debbie Wood's number, par now?
62. So the second line under SDSD uncertainties and assumptions, 1,200 personnel action requests, we've got that down to about 72, so the team's been working really hard to make sure that we bring that down. That will really help us forecast better and help improve our second interim. So the team's been doing a good job of removing those numbers and actually working with HR to lower the amount, because 1,200 was just about two and a half weeks ago. So they've been working really hard, that. Things that we're watching is, you know, how are we coming in with our savings on our SERP? And then, like I said, we've got a plan in place now that we're working on for, to make sure we come in as accurately can on that $25 million. And I haven't had a chance to update Bill because Bill was with you most of the afternoon, so sometime tomorrow, by tomorrow afternoon, I'll update Bill to let him know what we're doing.
James, could you just, I don't understand the 1,200 first pars and salary. What does that mean?
Well, what happens is that as staff moved from one school site to another based on allocations back in September, it takes a while for principals and school sites essentially to say, this staff person went from school A to school B. So what generally happens is those pars kind of bunch up just because of staff that at school sites to actually do the work. And so what ends up happening is they are sitting in a queue in the PeopleSoft system for us to process the action. And the action is to say, yes, we're going to move this resource from one location to a second location. And that's what we've been doing back and forth. In conjunction with moving those pars, there are salary adjustments that have to take place in the fact that the expenses were sitting at school A for a period of time. Until they get moved and recognized to the new cost center, we actually have to take those expenses and book them over to the new cost center. And that's a time-consuming process, because it's a, it's a manual entry in PeopleSoft.
And how does that affect our...
Well, what it could do is it could affect restricted versus unrestricted. So we're trying to project out what that would do for us from a restricted and unrestricted standpoint.
Great, thanks.
The new position control system will eliminate this very archaic process.
Yeah, right.
Rest of the restricted general fund, here's just an idea of...
But the only difference, wait a minute, before we leave that, that, I don't know, you had the number 1,200, and you say it may be less than that or whatever, but no matter what that number is, the difference would only be whether it's paid for out of restricted funds or non-restricted funds. There would not be any change in the total payroll.
That's correct.
Because the people are still with us and entitled to the same amount of pay.
Yep, you're absolutely right, Mr. DeBecque.
So there's no savings there, except for the possibility that a person would be moving into a place where their salary would be paid by restricted.
Yes.
Now, if I could just follow that, then the odds are that with less than 40% of our budget restricted, that there's not too much savings there.
Well, what I'm projecting to happen, what I think's going to happen, Mr. DeBecque, is that some of the personnel have been on the general fund unrestricted side. And now, once we actually have their place of what they're doing at the school, and what kind of school it is, and what kind of funding source, I may have a little bit of a switch in general on unrestricted. So in the end, I think it's going to equal out to be about the same projections. I think I'm just going to see a little bit of a switch from unrestricted to restricted.
Yeah, but, okay, all right. Not a big thing, really.
I don't think so yet. Any, based on the preliminary data, I don't see it as being a big, a big issue for us. One of the things that's happened to us now is based on the negative COLA, it does, it could provide a little bit of a problem for us on the restricted side of the house. The other thing that I'm showing there is that we've got restricted grants that expire. So an example of the first one is 4.8 million, the MSAP grant. When that expires, new grants approved, it will be used at different schools. Right now, we've got that grant that's helping other schools, but based on the eligibility requirements, it could actually be funded at different schools. So there could be a switch in, MSAP funding goes away from one school and gets moved to another. So we have to work with the instructional team to make sure we properly manage that. There's also some reductions in the NoChile Left Behind, the entitlement reduction. We're expecting that to be about negative 3.9 million. That's as information as we receive it, that's what we're coming in. So now, based on the negative COLA and the .38%, could see a little bit of a problem for general fund unrestricted, I mean restricted now. And so before, we were just managing unrestricted the whole time. Now we're making sure that we're managing restricted. The other component of this is that traditionally, what's happened when a lot of the funding has gone away for the restricted, especially Title I, Title II, and Title III, Title III is now unrestricted, the commitment at the state level was those resources that were there, they would go away. And so that's what we're looking at from that perspective to find out how many resources are actually there. Good news for us is the county office has approved the first, the district's first interim that you approved back on December 15th. There were not any material findings, there were a couple of questions that they asked of us, but they've actually submitted approval and said that we do accept your first interim, and we had that as a positive certification, so that's good news. I just had Linda Visnick in the office today, and she reconfirmed that for us. So that's always good news. Just as a reminder, the board must approve the second interim. We'll bring it to you by March 9th, because we have to submit it to the county by March 15th. Our goal is to have some preliminary information to you a little bit in advance before the March 9th deadline, so you don't just see it on the 9th, so we're working our way to that. And as usual, just as a reminder, you got three ways to certify the financials. One is positive, one is qualified, and one is negative. And as a team, I think the superintendent can attest, that we're working really hard to make sure we can submit a positive certification for the second interim. That's all I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you, James. We have a few public speakers. Anne Marie Haney, Stanley Hirsch, Lucille Park, Dean Hickman, and Lydia Cooley.
Thank Anne Marie, head to go.
Hi, I'm Stanley Hirsch, 3270 Second Avenue, San Diego. I am concerned, make it brief, about the outsourcing of hiring for elementary education positions to other states. This has been a chronic issue with this district for years, maybe decades. I would have thought that it would have stopped, but it hasn't. A very good friend of mine that I have, a fellow teacher, has a niece in an eastern seaboard state, elementary education major. She has yet to even student teach because it's so early in her senior year. She's holding a contract for next year for city schools. How can this be? Well, let me, the reason they've gone out of state for years, probably a lot of people in this room know it, is that these states are four-year states, they do not have any post-grad units. I mean, the people graduate as seniors being credentialed to teach in those districts. They then come here, absolutely as cheap on the salary schedule as you can get, okay? This has been going on for a long time. It actually saves a district money. My problem, however, is that you have all kinds of folks in elementary education on temporary contracts, okay? For example, one of the nine schools that was just rewarded that I work at a lot, I'm a visiting teacher, by the way, there are two teachers there in their third year of temporary contracts. They both know what I just told you, okay? In essence, people from other states are being put up above them, yet they're out in the trenches and evidently doing a good job. This is not right, folks, it's just not right. Joy talked about lack of ethos. This is lack of ethos from human relations, okay? When we go to ask for the property parcel tax, we're not going to look very good if some of their neighbors are no longer have jobs and have been replaced, although that's not clear-cut. It's, they've been replaced by folks from out of state, just because they were maybe 10 grand cheaper, so.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that to us.
President Barrera, I'm going to, I don't know anything about this, but I'll investigate this.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lucille Park. I live at 4350 30th Street, and I'm a teacher in the Visual and Performing Arts Department. And first of all, I truly want to thank you all for your support of music and the arts over the years, and my hope is that you will continue to support music and the arts for next year. There is a lot of support for music in schools from the San Diego community and from within our district. And as far as music teachers, some of my colleagues are here this evening, some are here, there were more here earlier, but some did depart. And I would like to say that the, excuse me, the high school honor orchestra and band auditions are this evening, and so a number of the high school teachers are not here. And also, the high school musicians that might have come tonight are not here as they are auditioning. As well, the elementary honor choir rehearsals begin tonight, and so those teachers are involved with that as well. Next week, I will be involved with the elementary honor orchestra auditions. And next month, we will have the solo... And next month, we will have the solo ensemble festival. If VAPA is cut, out, or reduced, then the opportunity for kids to be involved in the honor groups such as the band and orchestra and the solo ensemble festival will be gone, or really severely reduced or perhaps gone. And this affects hundreds and hundreds of kids. The VAPA department reaches 10,600 students with 28 teachers, and these are elementary instrumental music teachers. And we teach these 10,600 students in grades four through six, and if they, if I may kindly remind you, that gives you, quote, "a lot of bang for the buck." We do teach a lot of kids with 28 teachers, and we teach general ed students, but we teach a number of special ed students, students of course of all races, backgrounds, cultural and socio-economic backgrounds. And as you know, and I know you all are aware of this, music helps kids, helps kids to be well-rounded, and it teaches to the whole child. Research does show that there is a positive correlation between music and other subject areas. And participation in music builds teamwork skills, self-confidence, it also builds concentration, focus, and self-discipline. And if I may say, I was an ADHD kid, and it really helped me with focus, concentration, and self-discipline. For some kids, music keeps them in school. In fact, it's the only thing, especially, I think, when you get into high school, that keeps some kids in school. And if you cut off the VAPA department, that can be a problem, a real problem, because the VAPA department works with elementary kids. And if that's cut out, or really reduced, within a few years, you start to lose the middle school program, because the kids aren't starting in elementary. And I finally would just like to say, I guess I'm forced to stop, but I know Ms. Nakamura, I taught your child in fourth grade in the exportor on violin, and what a shining example for him to go on, and now in high school, and be in the band, and doing all kinds of, playing in a jazz band. I mean, the kids grow and blossom, and in summary, please kindly, and forgive me for going over, kindly support VAPA and the arts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barrera.
Good evening. My name's Dean Hickman, 4982 Mount Bigelow Drive, San Diego. And let me say right off the bat that I'll be one person to vote for the parcel tax.
One vote, I forgive you, Dean.
And I, I thought it also very interesting that the number two problem was the arts being cut. I speak to you today from three perspectives. The first, as a recently retired music teacher, following 33 years of service to this district. The second is as the conductor of the Pomerado Community Band for the past 20 years. The third is as a parent of a professional musician who got his start here in the district, incidentally at Madison High School. I have personally seen the long-term effects of music education, and strongly urge you to continue our music programs during your upcoming budgetary considerations. In reference to the community band, it is a voluntary organization made up of over 70 people who have benefited personally from music education in the public schools. Less than 10% of them were professional musicians, but all of them learned to love the creativity, camaraderie, and sense of being a complete person that they learned in their music classes in school. In these days of our education system being driven by multiple-choice achievement tests, the need for creative outlets has never been greater. I, for one, do not want to see our musical world become overpopulated with talent that is emblematic of the first round of American Idol. You have the power and strong encouragement to make that happen. Please continue your support of the arts programs and a completely staffed VAPA office. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lydia Cooley, I'm a music teacher in six elementary schools here. This is my first year in this district, and I've been impressed so far. Our children need music in elementary schools now more than ever. It's what motivates a lot of them to come to school. I'm quoting one of our school principals when I say that if we want to feed academics to our students, we need to provide them with inspiration too. Music is that inspiration for a lot of our kids, and it's so much more. Music builds bridges. Therefore, we as music teachers aspire to make every moment we teach an inter-curricular experience weaving English, history, mathematics, science, creative movement, visual art and aids, and hands-on activities into each music class. This builds connections between subjects, giving each child a fuller experience and understanding of academia as a whole. Dee Hanson, in her book, Music and Literacy Connection, says, "The study of music and the study of text reading parallel each other in the skills and knowledge children must have to become literate citizens." But music should not only be viewed as a tool for teaching academics, it has values and it teaches skills that no other subject can bring. Hanson continues, "Music opens different literacy doors. Through real music experiences, children discover new concepts, new skills, and new ways to express themselves. How else can they learn expression? In the age of abbreviated texting and Facebook postings, are we not worried that the next generation will not know how to appreciate art and music, or respond to ballet and poetry, or express themselves in more than 160-character letters? This society does not teach those skills, and a lot of parents cannot afford to teach those skills. They have to be taught in school. I believe that more and more of our children are living their lives in homes, communities, and mental attitudes that are starved for inspiration. What are our schools if we cannot give our children something to live for? I appreciate your attention, and before I totally complete, I'd like to share with you a song that our student just wrote. She's, she's a fourth grader in Marvin Elementary. She not only knows every note on this page, she knows exactly how to play this in a march-like manner, because she has learned expression. She only started in September, so there's been six months of work. And also, I'd love to share with you a few books that our staff put together, or have found, rather, that further describes the value of music education in public school. I'd really appreciate if you would consider those before making your decision.
Thank you very much. Okay, any further board comments on item HO2? If not, we'll move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. Does any board member wish to pull any item?
Move approval. Of all...
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
That's a record.
There we go.
Thank you, everybody, as well, for staying, for staying so late.